Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 12, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. I would like to begin our meeting by introducing two new members of the Planning Board who were very recently appointed by Town Council, and I will introduce them in the order of their appointment. So I'll begin with Dick Taylor. Dick is a longtime volunteer, serving Tiverton in a number of different capacities. Dick was on the Conservation Commission for a number of years, and I believe was Chair for about eight years. And he was also a member of the Zoning Board of Review for 11 years. Dick has also served on the Charter Review Commission and was one of the original team that put together the first Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan. So, welcome, Dick.
Thank you.
You bring a lot to the table. And Bill Gurlock, who is sitting down here, is known to many of you as a former Town Council member. He's also an experienced volunteer who has worked in a number of different capacities, for example, on the current Comprehensive Community Plan. And like Dick Taylor, he's also volunteered his time in expertise assisting a number of private sector organizations that benefit Tiverton in a number of different ways. So, welcome, Bill. So, I should say that Dick lives on Holly Circle off Bulgarmage, and Bill, I believe you still live down on King Road. So we have sort of a central Tiverton and a south Tiverton representative. So, welcome both. And that brings our membership up to its full complement of nine members. So now I'd like to do our usual roll call, and I'll begin, I think we'll just begin with Bill Gurlock. William Gurlock.
Present.
Christopher Shriver.
Here.
Janice Gomes.
Present.
William Taylor.
Dick.
I mean, Rich, Richard Taylor.
Here.
Rosemary.
Rosemary Eva.
I'm Stu Hardy. Patricia Hilton.
Here.
Adam. And Peter Brabanti.
Present.
Good, so we have all nine members here. The first item on our, oh, and I should also introduce Nathan Michael, who is our consulting engineer. Ashley, we think is on, Ashley is on the road, and we think she's not too far. So we do expect Ashley, and I believe that Dick Rogers, our DPW Director, will also be joining us tonight. And I should also mention that, sitting next to me, is our Planning Board Legal Counsel, Todd Romano, and I see Ed. You all know Ed, is sitting behind Nathan. So, and welcome, Ed, for being a new father. So the first item on our agenda should go quickly, and that is ECOG Energy. And this is the, this is the small ground solar array at 590 Fish Road. And it is being considered under both, as both a major land development and concurrently Development Plan Review Article 20 project. And we, we were hoping to wrap it up tonight. At our last meeting, which was August 1st, the applicant was still lacking six or seven fairly small and easy items, but they haven't been able to get all of those together, and they have requested a continuation to the October 4 regular monthly meeting. So I think the only thing now we have to do on Agenda Item Number One is have a motion to continue the public hearing to, to October 4, 2023. Is it October 4? It's October 3. You have October 3?
That's what I have on you.
Can somebody confirm that it's October 3?
That's Tuesday the 3rd, yes.
Tuesday the 3rd, okay. Sorry, I was wrong, Rosemary. So, so why entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for ECOG Energy? And this is, this is to install the 259 and 1/2 kilowatt ground solar array. That's about a half of, an acre worth of ground solar array at 590 Fish Road, which is plat 106, lot 110.
Still making a motion.
So Chris has made that motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Tricia. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing, no discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous? Okay. And there was no one here tonight to, to represent that, the applicant?
I don't have a copy of the request letter. Do we have one for the file?
Is there a file, a letter to the file?
I did.
I didn't have one of my hard copies.
Yeah, I, no, I did see a letter. I did see a hard copy letter.
I think you came in my office yesterday, did I give you?
No.
I made a copy for you.
You didn't give it to me.
I've done an extra copy.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Item 2 on our agenda is, the applicant is Jeremy S. Kane. At the bottom of Peaceful Way, he is, his attorney, I believe is Peter Squares, who is coming up to the table. And Principe Engineering is doing the engineering for this project. So Mr. Kane is not with us, Peter, tonight, but you are representing.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kane is sitting next to me.
Oh!
In the audience is Josh Morrow.
Okay, so Josh is representing Principe. So, nice to make your acquaintance, Mr. Kane.
My pleasure.
Now, do we have a recusal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I need to recuse from this. I am a legal abutter, so I am going to slide back from the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll give you a minute to depart. So, Mr. Kane would like to build a home at the very end of Peaceful Lane, which is in the primary watershed of Nonquit Pond, and therefore is governed by the Nonquit Pond Watershed Overlay Protection District. And that triggers the need for what we call an environmental review assessment to determine the impact of the, the building activity on the pond. And the pond, as you know, is, is a drinking water reservoir owned by the City of Newport Water Authority, and is also an impaired water body with a federally mandated TMDL program, Total Maximum Daily Loading Program, to determine and manage the amount of pollutant sitter dumped into the pond on a daily basis. So, it, it's a concern. We do have an ERS that Principe Engineering has, has prepared, and we do have an explanation that I believe Peter Squares prepared for the law firm. However, I noticed that Nathan has noted, Nathan Michael has been doing an analysis of the ERS, and I noticed that both the OWTS, which is the Septic Permit from DEM, and the freshwater wetland permit, which is required because there's a little stream, which is a tributary to Nonquit Pond, that goes either through your property, Mr. Kane, or abuts your property. Those two permits have been updated recently, and that's not, I don't believe, reflected in the ERS. So Nathan, would you like to explain if you're still lacking information that you need?
Yeah, I think so. So when I was reviewing the ERS, I noticed that the narrative kind of mentioned things that I didn't have in my set of plans. So when I went online, I noticed that it was updated in August 23, I believe, and the plans that I have are dated November 22. So a lot of my comments are associated with missing items that I don't, that I didn't have. So I reached out to Ed, but I didn't get the updated plans, you know, but I can still go through my memo.
And Mr. Chairman, just to address that point, if I may, so we did have, before we applied, we did have a set of plans that we sent to Ed just to sort of get his preliminary look at it. I think what might have happened is that, once we applied, we had updated plans, but the email with the old set of plans might have been forwarded to Mr. Michael, which led to his review of that set. But, as was indicated, there is an updated approval from DEM and plan submission. But, I guess what I would say is, we don't intend to ask for any variances from the, either the underlying zoning requirement or the Watershed Protection Overlay District. So, the use is allowed, we're within the setback from Nonquit, and our, our impervious surface is going to remain well under the 10%. So any conditions that you'd want to consider, we would certainly be amenable to, and any additional materials that might have gotten, that didn't get to your engineer, we'll make sure that he gets them.
Nathan, why don't you go through, because we, I haven't seen a copy of your memo. Has anybody seen a copy of Nathan's memo?
It was on the table.
Oh, it was on the table. Well, well, it is too late for me to read that now. So Nathan, why don't you go through that?
Okay. So I kind of just set the memo up as per.
So, so, so do the people who get these things electronically, did you, you get those electronically?
The memo was sent today. It was sent today because I was kind of, I didn't know if I was going to get another. I didn't want to review the whole set, and then, so I kind of just waited, you know, in case I got the new set, I'd still be able to review the new information.
I think.
But, since I didn't get it, I accepted the page, so I, I just updated it.
Go ahead, Nathan, please.
So the cover memo, it references an erosion control and sediment control plan and a stormwater management plan. However, I only received a page sheet, one of four of the plans, so I'm assuming the sheets 2 through 4 might have that information, I just didn't have it prior review. On the ERS itself, as mentioned, is a deck, garage, pool, whoever noted that is on the site plan that I had. I did speak with them before the meeting, apparently that stuff, so it's all, it's all in the new updated set of plans. Just missing things on the plan sheet, like in North Arrow, planting schedule, stamp for impression land survey, or, and, oh, and then I just have a note, ERS references items that were not in the safe plans, please clarify, it's been altered and it has. And then just three items on the checklist. Item 19 is a density calculation, which, and it didn't seem like a lot coverage calculation, for 1, 2, Article 5, Section 3, so we just recommend the applicant revise these application, these calculations. I didn't see a soil map in what I received, just recommend providing a soil map, and I just have a checklist item 27. And then item 65 is the submission of drainage calculation, I didn't see any drainage calculation, so we just recommend the applicant revise the drainage calculation.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Is that, is that fine with Principe? Is Principe good with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have that on file, I'll be happy to send it to you and Ed, whoever else wants me to copy.
More importantly, I can add to Nathan's, what I found on the plan. The permit number that's listed on the plan differs from the letter that we received in our package from DEM. On the plan, there is something, existing conditions for Kim Battello. I looked at the property record card, and I don't see a Kim Battello listed.
What, what part of the plan are you looking at, Rosemary?
I'm sorry?
Which portion of the plan are you looking at?
The plan reference. The title block doesn't even list the owner's name, or an environmental, whatever it was, name. The, on the plan, on the left side of the plan, it gives the former owner's name.
Yeah, we can update that.
I think you need it, but we need the letters from DEM. The other thing that I, I didn't see in the package was the, normally we get conservation permission recommendation, and that's important to me.
It was sent to Conservation, and it was not, there was no, no response, I asked for a comment from it, from Conservation, there is nothing back from Conservation.
We've always gotten something back, because it's such a critical area, especially this. I was down there trudging through the, the field the other day, too, and it's, it's very close. It's a lovely area. I live just a couple lots north of there, but, and that stream was rerouted years ago on the original subdivision that comes through yours, properties, but that's just federal history.
So, so Peter, did you also, Ed, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did you also send a copy of the plans and, and supporting material to City of Newport Water Authority?
Yeah, reached out to them, there was no response from them either, no response from them or Conservation.
Did the plan?
I got a response from Rick Rogers, who said he was fine with the plan. That was today. 5:25, he said, Peaceful Way Environmental Review Statement, DPW has reviewed the attachments of the ERS, DPW finds the ERS acceptable, but nothing back from Conservation or report.
Did it go on their agenda?
I, I don't, I don't know, no, I don't know.
I can't make the representation that, it's our intent to, to, you know, if there were any recommendations from, from Conservation, even if we were to receive them after tonight, that it's our, it's our goal to implement those, we would agree to implement those. And, you know, our, our goal is, regard to this, is to comply with every aspect of the, the waterfront protection overlay district and the underlying zoning. I think the plan we've submitted does do that, but, but we're not, we're not seeking to avoid any recommendations that the Conservation may have.
Or the City of Newport.
Or the City of Newport.
Does, does anybody have any, yes?
So this is the only set of plans I've seen. I don't have a ton of anything else that you guys have, but there should be something out here for where the trucks get cleaned up? Truck re-trucks, things like that, where they're getting cleaned out, that should be marked on here somewhere. Should be a spot right here, all that stuff, where that stuff, please, please, on the lot.
Are you talking about during the construction phase?
Yeah, construction, yeah. And I would think it would be on this, this DEM plan, considering it's, you know, it's waste, that's going to get disclosed on the, on the property, or taken away. But I know that almost every set of plans we have, I just mentioned.
So, I did just confer with the engineer. If that's not there, we will certainly add that. I do know it does have DM approval, so, but we will add that.
Right, okay.
I have a curiosity question to the engineer. Do you have to get modification or permission from DEM for the electrical to go underneath the brook, or how is it going to come in?
I don't think we needed their approval, but it was on the plan that we did submit to them.
It doesn't, it said underground, but you're going to cross the stream.
I remember working with them on that. What's your question?
Do you have to have it in the letters? And I'd like a copy of that letter, so that it comports with the, the plan, with the files, the DEM letter, the most recent one. I think Nathan mentioned it in his, the email that was forwarded to us yesterday, the letter in the plan, don't.
Yeah, in the packet was the November 22 DEM permit.
Was that, was that the packet that you were going off of, an email, an emailed packet, or?
It was the one that was labeled, yeah, it was labeled 1 through 7. Yeah, it was labeled 1 through 7.
That was, so.
So that went in the packet.
Just to clarify the confusion, that, that email with labeled 1 through 7 was the preliminary submission that we submitted to the Planning Department that didn't have the updated plans. When we did finally file and paid the application fee, I believe you have the updated set of plans, that, that's my understanding. Okay.
So the hard copy and electronic copy are different?
The electronic copy that I originally emailed you was different. When we, when we filed the hard copy after that, we had an updated set of plans and the updated DEM approval, which was submitted to the town. Was a new electronic copy presented, Peter?
No, we never actually, we never filed electronic copy. The electronic copy is just.
The electronic copy you sent was the submission, and I got the hard copy, so.
No, so, so what happened was, before we had the updated plan, I just sent out an email saying, we're thinking of filing this, please take a look, tell me if you see, see anything. After that, when we, when we were prepared to file, we submitted a hard copy, we filed a hard copy with an updated plan, which was updated at the end of August. So the, the hard copies you have are the updated plans. I think the issue is that the engineer reviewed the, the electronic plan, that wasn't the submitted plan. So if you have a hard copy in front of you, Rosemary?
I have a copy of the letter, the DEM letter to Lawrence Barrera, dated November 28th, 2022. That was the former owner. That's what came in our packet, the hard copy packet that I got. I, I don't feel comfortable, I don't want to hold this project up, but I want to make sure, because it's going to set a precedent if we don't, you know, get conservation in Newport Water, if the plans didn't go out.
No, they did go out. Ed said he sent them out, neither responded to him.
Okay, as long, he said he.
That's different.
Is, okay.
He said they didn't respond.
I have an email on Monday, July 30th, that has seven attachments.
Okay.
That says attached to find the environmental review statement application to the Planning Board, which I would like to file on behalf, on behalf of a client with the property located on Peaceful Way. And that's what is in the electronic packet. And I don't know if that is, what matches the hard copy, but that's what happened, has the petition.
So, I have a substantive concern. The amount of impervious surface is very important because of the impaired state of Nonquit Pond, and we try to keep that impervious surface as low as possible. And as Peter noted, there is a 10% limitation on impervious surface in any given project or on any given lot. And in this, and what you're proposing now comes to about 6.5, so you're well under the limit. But I'm wondering if you would please consider getting that even lower. I'm not asking you to change the configuration of your, your house, your, your pool, your garage, or the size, but I'm just wondering if, if we could replace some of the asphalt, because there's quite a bit of asphalt. There, there's 9,628 square feet of proposed impervious surface, which is 6.5% of the entire lot. I think that can be cut back by taking some of that asphalt out and replacing that with, with a, with a driveway cover that is recommended by RIDEM. And Nathan, maybe you can help me with the terminology, but basically it's rounded stone, small rounded stone. What is the term they use? They have a specific term for that, but it is, they are, DEM is, is, is now attempting to get away from gravel, which can turn into hardpan after a period of time, and replacing that with rounded pebbles that don't have the sharp edges, that will create a surface that is much more amenable to rainfall, and is a better receptor of rainfall. And would you consider taking some of that asphalt and turning that into impervious surface, just to get, just to reduce that a little bit? I'm just asking, you know, politely if you would consider that, because I think that, while you currently meet all of the requirements, the more, the more impervious surface we can preserve and protect on your, on your lot, the better for the pond. So that would be my only recommendation. I don't think that would cost you any more money.
We'd agree to that. We'd, we'd put that on the record tonight, we'll, we'll agree to that.
So what we're being asked to do is simply accepting, we use the term accept, the ERS, the Environmental Review Statement, which we then turn over to the building official with a positive recommendation. I don't think we're ready to do that tonight, unfortunately. I think that, personally, my colleagues may disagree with me, I think that I'm a little confused because of the, because of the issues that have been brought up tonight. I kind of like to see a cleaner presentation that we all have, so that we're all on the same page. Do, do the rest of you agree with me on this? I'm not, I, I'd like the, the changes in the plans that, that Peter has already agreed to, to be made. Would you mind coming back? Perhaps, perhaps we will be able to get you in at our October 3 regular monthly meeting.
So I would, I would actually make a request, if, if the board is comfortable doing it, and based on the fact that it is a permitted use within the zone, and we're willing to comply with all the requirements of the zone, and any comments that are provided by either your professional staff, or that are subsequently provided by either Conservation or the City of Newport, if we could have an approval tonight that's conditioned upon us meeting all those requirements, or an acceptance. I do understand that this board is thorough, and they like to take a look at, at, at the plans and, and, you know, see it, see what, what, but, you know, this, this application, it is really a very straightforward application. It is a single-family house on a house lot in Nonquit Pond, a single-family house on a house lot. The only, the only, the only thing that would trigger any review is the fact that it's within 2,000 feet of Nonquit Pond, but we, our submission that we've submitted, and with even the, the issues that were raised tonight, we'd comply with any conditions that would be imposed. So if, if it's the pleasure of the board, we'd ask if, that we could get an acceptance tonight with any conditions that you'd like to see imposed, put onto that acceptance.
And then that would be enforced by Ashley, our, our interim planner, AO.
And we do, I think we wouldn't get a building permit until it satisfied those.
Until the, the modification. Until the, the modifications have come in. Well, I'm, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to, I'm impressed by the applicant's willingness to accept recommendations and meet us, meet all of our concerns. So I would withdraw my suggestion that we delay this.
Stu?
Unless other people have...
I have a couple of things on the plan.
Sure, Janice.
This plan has not been signed by a licensed surveyor. And I'm curious to know what a QPA is.
QPA is a qualified pervious area.
Okay.
DEM knows, they approve undeveloped land to be a quantified amount of pervious area that can pervy any rainwater through it.
Okay, thank you.
That is undisturbed, remains undisturbed.
Any, any other questions or comments about the plans? Yes?
So it sounded like the conservation didn't get back to the applicant. Is there a reason they didn't get back? And is it required to move forward with the application? Or is it a null point? Conservation chose not to respond? Maybe there's an issue or...
Apparently, well, we like to get comments from the Conservation Commission on all of these ERSs. It is not a requirement. It's not in our subdivision regulations, although it should be, I think. They should have, there should be formal written input from the Conservation Commission on all of these environmental review statements. But that's not the applicant's fault. That, that apparently is something that slipped through the crack because conservation, particularly during the summer, often will skip meetings or, you know, will be unable to get a quorum at meetings.
But it sounds like it's not needed for this application to move forward?
It is, it is not needed, nor, nor is comments from the City of Newport Water Authority required, although they are usually pretty good about doing that. So I, I don't know, maybe somebody's on vacation or...
It could be that. It could be, I've never dealt with them before. I've never sent them anything before, but...
Well, we, we always send them anything that involves Nonquit Pond because they own Nonquit Pond. And they own a strip of land around Nonquit Pond, very narrow strip of land, so, so...
So is there future responses from either group that would hinder the process?
But Peter, Peter Squires has already said that if they do come back to us, and I'm going to ask Ed to contact both Conservation and Newport Water Authority tomorrow, if you can do it, Ed, to, to say, "Hey, get your comments in now." And then if they do that in a timely fashion, we'll pass them on to Peter and to principally engineering. And then that can get folded in because Peter has already made that concession. So, so I, I think under the circumstances...
And Stu, Rick Rogers sent me an email at 5:30 today saying that he was okay with the ERS. He did review it.
Okay. Well, we, we also like to get Rick's input on ERSs. So, well, I would, I, so the, the restrictions, the conditions that we would like to place on our acceptance of the ERS would be to make all of the changes on the plans that have been mentioned tonight. And Peter, you've got a good list of those. That we will, that we will give Conservation Commission and Newport Water another opportunity, a second opportunity to, to speak or not speak, you know, it's up to them. We have a memo from Nathan, so you need to respond to that in a formal way. But I think you've already said that you're going to do everything that Nathan has asked. And finally, you're going to take a look at your asphalt driveway and see where that, as a practical matter, depending on the slope involved and so on, where the asphalt can be removed or the plan for the asphalt can, can be replaced with a plan for an impervious surface for the driveway.
A piece stone?
A piece stone, yes. But there, but there's, that's not quite it either, is it Nathan? There's a technical term.
DEM likes the three-quarter inch crushed stone.
Crushed washed stone, thank you. Crushed washed stone. That's the term they like to use, isn't it Nathan?
The washed then?
I don't know what the washing is all about, but crushed washed. I think what they mean is it's, that it's, it doesn't have rough edges.
Exactly. It gets the sediment out of there.
Yes, yes.
But that's still compact. That's not the stuff you're talking about. The crushed stone is just a compact. You're talking about like half-round, non-contacted round stones.
Yes, but, but we were just trying to think of the technical term that, that DEM uses. Yep. So, okay, so if you look...
What have they used for actual crushed stone, say then? Because crushed stone is totally different than what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, they, they're trying to get away from the, from the crushed stone, which has sharp edges and can compact more easily and create, and create a, so, okay.
Can I just, it's kind of ambiguous, the removal of the asphalt and how much you want them to remove.
I think, I think, I think I'm leaving that to their discretion, unless some, some of my colleagues would like to say, "But anything we say now is going to be arbitrary because we, well, we have, we show, we all have plans of the driveway. We all have a set of plans that shows the driveway. It's quite an extensive driveway, actually, because it runs around behind the house to the garage." We, we have that, but we don't know where it might be practical or impractical to replace the asphalt. And I think that would have a lot to do with the grading involved. I'm not an engineer, but I, I'd like to stay away from making some kind of an arbitrary thing, like 50% has to be, has to be impervious or 60% has to be impervious because that's arbitrary and capricious. I'd like you to make that decision. And if you come up and decide that, hey, we can't actually do any of it, you know?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to address your legal counsel's point, I just took it at an aside with the engineer, and he suggested that it would be feasible to remove all of it.
Okay.
All of it. If, and we'd, we'd agree to that if that's the condition, if that's what you wanted to, to require.
That's terrific. Just may address this. My concern was enforcement. How's Ashley or the building official going to know how much is sufficient removal of asphalt? That was my only concern, Stu. I know you're trying to do, be as practical as possible, but if they're willing to replace the entire thing, take that.
We can go either way. We could either...
So we've just heard from principally engineering that...
You've got to make one sufficient, Stu.
Yes.
Get away from just a gravel lot. Maybe just a catch basin for the runoff from the driveway that diverts into your rain garden.
Okay.
And maybe increase the size of your rain garden or something. That's really going to stake out a gravel driveway that long.
No, no, Greg, we're not talking about gravel here. We're, we're talking about crushed washed stone.
Blacktop driveway, which is kind of a nightmare for winter, driveway that long. My suggestion is just try to catch the water and divert it to maybe a slightly larger rain garden. So you have this, it's basically six one half, doesn't the other? Only have the convenience of blacktop driveway.
Well, we'd be willing to go with it. You know, we understand that the, the board has to, you know, take into effect drainage. If the board is uncomfortable with that much blacktop driveway, we'll, we'd put a pervious driveway in place. If we, instead, you think it's more feasible to go with the, and it, you're probably right.
He has a choice. I mean, if it was me, I'd go that. Driveway that catches the water and diverts it around. He's on a gravel driveway that long.
That's, that's absolutely true. That's absolutely true.
Yeah, for the plowing purposes, but yeah, I think, but whatever.
As long as you can still do something to recharge that water, which means I don't have to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll, whenever I'll comply, I'll look at whatever I'm not...
I, I would still like to get rid of the asphalt and go with a crushed washed stone as recommended by Ry Dem. In other instances, I think, I think that that is, that is a more earth-friendly way to go than catch basins, which is more like, you know, we talk a lot about our commitment to low-impact development. Catch basins is not an example of low-impact development. So let's, let's get away from the asphalt. That would be my recommendation. My colleagues can overrule me. I only have one vote here.
I'd like to know what Conservation would say, because they're the ones that have all the experience.
They're not here tonight, so we're trying to rest this up tonight.
Just to make it as simple as possible, I spoke to the applicant, and I do appreciate your point, because that is a good point. But we're okay taking on that a little bit additional aggravation. So we're, we're okay going with, you know, for enforcement purposes, making it the entire length of the driveway. We're okay with using the crushed washed stone, even if it is a little bit, a bit more of an aggravation in maintenance, but we're willing to take that on. So just to help the conversation along.
Then I would, I would, I would make that then a part of a motion that I will make to, to, to accept the ERS with the conditions that I have enumerated earlier. And so I would, I would make that motion. So we need to have a second, and then we can have a further discussion, and then we'll see if other people agree or disagree.
I'll second that motion, Stu.
Okay, so purpose, for, for purposes of a discussion, so now we're having a discussion. Is everybody happy with the conditions that we have set on the ERS? And is everybody happy with allowing the planner AO to then review and make sure that everything is in proper order with all of the conditions that we've made?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I had a question about the, right as you enter the property on the right there. Is that a creek or is that, you show a drainage easement on the plan, but that sure looks like a creek.
Driving on the right?
Yeah, on the right side as, as you're going in.
At the stream we spoke about?
Yeah.
Let me see if there's terminology on here. Yeah, it's a stream, headbutt stream.
Yeah, I'm surprised that Ry Dem set the boundaries of the, all the way up the hill on the other side of that.
Buffer markers are there, yep.
The buffer markers are there, but it didn't even include that, the stream, which seemed kind of strange, but...
Well, that's the buffer off of the stream, meaning you can't go any closer to the stream and clear it. So that's actually additional from the stream.
Yeah. And so I, my only question on the driveway is just, that one part could be kind of steep in the winter and ice getting up that thing and also to plow that little section. Because once you get up on the lot, you're, it's pretty flat.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can we just clarify for the applicant whether or not the, the conditional approval, do we need a, some sort of positive response from Conservation Commission or the city of Newport?
No.
Or we're just, we're going to give it one more shot to solicit?
We're just going to give it one more shot. We do, there's nothing in our, in our, in our zoning or in our subdivision regulations that requires a response. There should be, but there is not at the present time. So we're just giving them, we're just giving them another opportunity, and it's up to them, up to Newport, and it's up to Conservation Commission to, to do it or not.
And I believe the applicant said they would comply with whatever recommendations came from either.
How long do you want to give it?
Thank you, Ed. Good point.
I, I would, I would say probably, I would say let's give them two weeks.
Why don't you put that in the email?
I will.
That won't, that won't hold the applicant up too much. Okay. So we, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. I, I see no further hands going up for discussion. So I think we're ready to vote. Those in favor, raise their hand. Those opposed? Okay, did you get that? Good. Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You don't have to come back. Thank you for being so cooperative and amenable to all of our suggestions. And I hope you, I hope your project goes very well, and you'll have a beautiful spot, and it looks like a wonderful, a wonderful building that you're going to put up. Thank you. And to the ones I'm seeing again, it's nice to see you again. And to the ones I haven't seen before that are just down on board, good luck. Do you want me to go on to number two?
It's a concept. I'm not worried about that. You have Ashley anyway.
Okay, so, so now this brings us to agenda item number three. And this is a two-lot subdivision, and it is at 3407 Main Road. And that's down across from the Town Farm Recreational Area and the old town, the old town landfill. So it's directly across the street on, on the, on the western side of Main Road.
Opposite Pardon Gray?
And, is it opposite Pardon Gray? No, that's Billy Hathaway's land. Okay. And Pardon Gray. And it's, it's actually plot 709 lot 102. And I believe we're talking about taking that lot and, and turning it into two lots. So it's a simple two-lot subdivision. And so I'm going to call upon the applicant. And I see Don Maderas is the engineer for the applicant. And the applicant is Andrew Ditten. Are you Mr. Ditten?
Yes, I am.
Welcome to, to the Tiverden Planning Board. And so, Mr. Ditten or Don, would you like to kind of explain what you're doing? And then I can call on Ashley and maybe, I'll call on Ashley after you made your general comments telling us what you're planning to do. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Don Maderas, professional land surveyor, professional civil engineer with Abel Engineering. And with me is Andrew Ditten, the property owner and applicant. He owns the property with his wife Lisa Belsky. Lisa couldn't be here tonight, but she sends her well wishes. So the property's an eight-acre parcel on the west side of Main Road, across from the south end of the Pardon Gray Preserve. And picture's worth a thousand words. Just send that around. Shows the property highlighted and outlined.
I think you've seen this in your packet already.
So the property contains eight acres. It's basically about 900 feet deep off the street. It's about 525 feet wide. It's not in the watershed protection district. There are no wetlands on or near the property. We're not in CRNC jurisdiction. We're not in, in any flood zone. So this is a pretty straightforward piece of property, high and dry. So we have, what we do have is eight acres, but we only have 154 feet of frontage. In the R80 zone, of course, 120 feet of frontage is the minimum. So what we would, in an effort to minimize land disturbance, minimize building roads to create frontage, when the houses are going to be down in the back over the hill anyways, we're trying to minimize curb cuts. We're trying to preserve the historical view corridor along Main Road by not having two curb cuts. So, but what we're looking to, in order to accomplish that, we're hoping to ask the zoning board for a frontage variance for one of the lots. So one lot will contain the minimal of 120 frontage. The other lot will contain the balance. And with that frontage variance, we would put in a common driveway. And with that frontage variance, we would put in a common driveway, so one curb cut on Main Road, common gravel driveway, associated drainage, underground utilities. The driveway would basically enter and go to the two houses down below the hill. As you know, on the west side of Main Road, there's a pretty good ridge of land, and all the houses on the west side of Main Road are right on the top of that ridge, which runs more south with the road. Where our proposed houses are on the backside of the ridge, they won't even be seen from Main Road. They'll have a fantastic view as a power of marsh, of course, and the river, but there'll be, there'll be very little visual impact to Main Road, which is one of the things we really like about this proposal. So we think all the, you know, environmental factors, minimizing land disturbance, the aesthetic, you know, we're promoting and maintaining the existing view corridor, sensitive to Pardon Gray across the street. This is a part of town which, you know, we want to keep it looking the way it is. We think that's worthy of the frontage variance for the one lot, to have less than the minimum frontage, and obviously, as you know, we need this board to support that request, or at least comment on that request to the zoning board. What we believe the process is, is we need preliminary plan approval of the subdivision in order to be able to go to the zoning board to request the frontage variance. So that's why we're here tonight first with the concept, informal, to get your comments, what you like, what you don't like. What we're hoping you're going to like is what we've basically presented. We'd like to then come back and file a preliminary plan with contingencies, contingent upon, we'd ask for preliminary approval contingent upon deceiving the frontage variance from the zoning board. Because the frontage variance is tied into the design location of the roadway and whatnot, what we would like to do is not, A, break through the existing stone wall until we and the board are comfortable with the entry point. We don't want to do drainage design, which we will do, we just don't want to do it until we know we've got the frontage variance, then we know we've got the project. Otherwise, we would come back and start the whole preliminary plan filing over. So I kind of, it was a little wordy describing that, but basically, we'd like to come back here with a preliminary plan, we'd like conditional preliminary plan approval, conditioned on getting the frontage variance, conditioned on the town engineers and the town planning consultants review and approval of the roadway, the driveway design and the drainage design, RIDOT approval of the curb cut, which this is a state highway, so we know we need a curb cut from RIDOT, and contingent upon DEM's approval of the subdivision for the two septic systems and wells which will serve the two houses. We haven't even gotten in there to do soil testing, we don't see any issues, there's about 65 feet of relief from the crest of the hill going down to the bottom property line well before the marsh, the flood zone, CRNC. Again, we can't really get into the lot, the stone wall across the front is unbroken. So to get in there and do soil testing, we've either got to make friends with the neighbors and access the property through there, or we wait until it's decided where the stone wall opening is going to be for the common driveway. So that's basically, the other things I wanted to tell you, Mr. Ditten is the property owner and the applicant. It's great for me to be working with somebody like him, because he not only is the applicant's owner, but he's going to live in one of the lots in the development. So Mr. Ditten is going to live in the northerly lot. The southerly lot is basically, he's going to put up for sale, basically to finance the purchase of the property and the building of his own house on the northerly lot. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
Ashley, comments?
So I think you'll also need to request lot width relief in addition to frontage relief.
Ashley, we didn't quite get what you said.
You'll have to, I think you'll have to request lot width relief as well as frontage relief, because the lot width is supposed to be 200 feet, and there's no way that that's going to happen for either lot. So both lots would need width relief, and then you're looking at 90 feet of relief for the second, I guess it's lot, is that labeled as lot two, for lot two?
Lot two.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I understand the purpose, it's just, it's a significant amount of relief.
If we, so one thing I would say, first off, we'll check the definition of the lot width, because in various towns, and I'm not sure in Tiverton, it's at the building...
Lot width is measured from the front lot line.
It's from the front lot line at the 50-foot front setback is lot width, because I know in some other towns, it's measured at the actual building line, because we have well over the lot width where the buildings are. But that's fine, we'll ask for that additional relief. We, you know, if the zoning board sees fit to grant the frontage relief, I don't know why they wouldn't give the lot width. Again, this is, there's going to be 150-foot-wide block of land on Main Road that's going to be preserved as it is. So, you know, a lot of these, you know, variances have to do with houses being close together and in dense areas, and that's when they're more, you know, they have more, you know, teeth behind them, I guess, in terms of the willingness to want to grant them, but the point is, if we need lot width, we'll ask for that as well.
I have a quick, may I?
Yes.
Ashley, are you finished? What do you think?
Yeah. What do you think about, why did you, this is going to be a conventional minor subdivision as opposed to a rural residential?
That's correct.
Did you consider a rural residential? Would you have gravel?
Well, we did, but we believe we couldn't meet the density requirement, we couldn't get four lots to be able, rural, to be able to get two, four lots conventional, to be able to get the two rural.
What do you think, Ashley?
I mean, there's no real way for me, to tell, you got to essentially design the subdivision, you're going to put in the road to the town standards and do a yield plan in order...
Right.
Right, but to his point, you can't do, you can only do 50% of the density of a conventional subdivision, so I have to rely on your assessment that you can't put the roadway and infrastructure in as required by the conventional requirements and still get four lots.
And not need variances for specifically lot width and frontage, because what happens is, on a conventional four-lot subdivision of this eight-acre parcel, we've got to make the road so long to make the lots conformed, the lot width and frontage, that the land we lose nets out so that we can't get four acres, so therefore, we can't...
So you did consider it.
So we did consider it, yes.
Okay, so conventional. It didn't say on the agenda, it just said two lot, minor subdivision, didn't say two lots.
Right, so essentially, we're looking at this as an existing frontage subdivision, where we're going to ask for a frontage variance and two lot width variances.
There was a house here a long time ago.
Was there?
A little girl, and there was an entrance. It was torn down, it was a very nice house.
Oh, wow.
Historic house.
Anybody else have any comments, or, this is a concept review, so the applicant is looking for our feedback and our input? Yes, Peter?
I'm just wondering if you have done any work to understand, I mean, you've got the drive proposed along the lot line on the south end, if you looked at other configurations, or you chose that for a specific reason, and is, what is the grade like, you know, getting to Main Road from the lot, and was that the reason for your choice? And I'm wondering, because you mentioned, and I do think preserving the view corridor is going to be extremely important in how the wall is treated, and so that is really just a seamless thing that sort of disappears, but I'm wondering, I think it would be, from my perspective and probably other members, you know, the aesthetics of how that is treated, which may cause some engineering issues, but in terms of what that view corridor looks like and how it is designed, and so having a section and an elevation to be able to reference and really understand visually what that's going to look like would be really useful if you're, you know, going to move forward and you think you can make it work and with the other things that need to be achieved in terms of the requirements, but that would be a significant, I think, point of concern. So if you can really show as low impact as possible to that view corridor and how the historic wall and the grading will look, both, from both approaches, and giving us a sense of that from scale and dimension would be really useful.
I'd like to just add, I concur with Peter's comments, and I'd like to just suggest that possibly a deed restriction on the lot that Mr. Ditten will sell to assure that any new building on that lot not exceed a certain height, so that it won't be seen from Main Road. We would like to maintain the rural viewscape as much as possible, and you're doing that, I know that's what your intention is, and I love the idea that that lot right on Main Road, the panhandle, so to speak, will be preserved as undeveloped land, so that motorists will have, will continue to have the iconic Tiverton view that we get in that neighborhood. But maybe a deed restriction on the house lot that you intend to sell to make sure that the, somebody doesn't, you know, you know, build a house that will, that can be seen from Main Road.
The house that's to the south of the ed, it's built in front of what used to be Manchester's home, I believe, is that what you're showing here is number 85?
The house to the south is 3425 Main Road?
Yeah, but the one below it.
Oh, back off the road, yeah, that's 85, that comes in off of Nonquid Lane.
Right, but that one, I'm just thinking, because you can just see the top of it, and when that one came before the board, there was a concern about being able to see it. You don't see that much if you notice to the south on that house there.
Do you know about how far off of the 50% you are?
Not off the top of my head, no, but I did do a layout, like I said, and when I subtracted out the minimum length of road needed to create enough frontage and lot width for the four conventional lots, that put us under the, you know, 80,000 times four to have four conventional lots, which then means we can't have two rural lots. So that's why we kind of...
I'm just wondering, what, I mean, you're going to ask for relief either way, you know, is this, would the board rather grant relief of the, or send it to the zoning board for 50% or for 90 feet of frontage?
Well, our comp plan clearly states that development in that part of Tiverton be rural residential to the extent possible, and I think that there might be an advantage to a rural compound. You know, there are three different types of rural residential, and a rural compound is, I think, the best one. And if you want to ask relief for that, I think that there might be advantages there. For example, you know, in a rural compound, a common driveway is recommended, so...
And no further subdivision?
And preserved, that would also involve 50% of the land being preserved as open So that would be, I mean, personally, I would probably rather build that route than just do a conventional two-lot subdivision.
So we would ask relief for density?
Density.
Okay.
Still has to go to zoning.
Correct.
You're still, you know, you're not altering your process.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you come to planning, you guys have to grant a waiver to your own regulation, which mimics the density requirement in the zoning ordinance, but...
Right, right.
That's a technicality at that point.
Right. How did the rest of you feel about that? Everybody knows what a rural residential development is. It's, the whole idea, some towns call it conservation development, some towns actually call it cluster development, because the idea is to create, to create an old-fashioned New England rural scene where the buildings are clustered together, freeing up a lot of open space, which is not developed, which would not, which would then become undevelopable in the future. And it's something that our Comprehensive Community Plan talks a lot about, and it's encouraged, it shouldn't be just encouraged, it should be required in certain parts of town, but I think that that's probably, probably a better way to go for those of us who care about conservation of land and open space and the preservation of our historic pastures and farmland and stone walls, that would be an issue with me as well as Peter, so... Any questions about that, or any comments? Does everybody think that that's something that the applicant should look into? Now, the applicant can still come back, it's up to the applicant, entirely up to the applicant to decide whether they want to come back with a rural compound or with a conventional two-lot subdivision. Either way, I think we'd be receptive to what you're trying to do. But, Adam, sorry, I cut you off.
No, that's okay. So you have a couple buildings on the two separate lots here on this plant. Is that kind of your rough dream of where you want your buildings to be on these two lots when it's all said and done?
It's approximate. I mean, we're not, here at a lockdown house location, it's just a visual of where planning. It is representative.
Jump to what Stu said, with the rural compound, how would that affect the location of the buildings on those two lots?
Look at the top.
You know, like you have to think about how he dreams his property to look, would that affect, you know, his...
I don't think it would have any impact whatsoever. You can place a building anywhere, and, I mean, we just went through this process on Lake Road with the so-called Lake Road Acres, a rural compound, so that they could, they would have the option of putting those buildings anywhere that it made sense, but they would be required to set 50% of the land aside as open space. I don't think that's going to be a problem for you at all, and...
And the lot width is less than a rural compound as well?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, so you've got a little more flexibility there.
Yeah, I would say dimensionally, you should be able to meet everything, it's just a density relief.
Yep.
So you just need to look at the provisions under the compound, and if you can live with all the requirements, then it sounds like the board would prefer to give, you know, recommend relief on the density of a rural compound than on lot frontage.
Okay, great. I think that's probably the way we're going to go, because it's essentially the same thing we're proposing, we're just packaging it differently, I think, and I don't see, it still meets Mr. Ditten's objectives, so we're happy to come back with that, with that variance request for the density for a rural subdivision.
How do you get into the lot now?
We got to ask the neighbors. We got to jump over the stone wall.
Okay. I've been doing my psych walk, saying I can't go in there. I've been doing my psych walk, saying I can't go in there.
So the only other thing I want to raise is that it sounds like you are asking for the board to condition a preliminary approval on a handful of items, and logistically, we have to figure out how you want to do that because under the, well, currently, if you file a preliminary plan application and you don't have those items, I'm going to certify you incomplete without them granting some kind of ability for those items to get discussed as a conditional items. And we're talking, what I think I heard was PAP, obviously, the zoning relief, that's a given, but a DEM approval and a stormwater design. Did I miss anything else?
Just the road design, too, the driveway design. Basically, all the engineering. We really don't want to spend money on engineer until we know that the final footprint of the road and how this is going to work. So the way I envision it working is when we file on the checklist, we put a notation that we're requesting a waiver to a preliminary plan checklist item and request that that checklist item would become a condition of conditional preliminary plan approval. We then go to the zoning board, we get the variance, then we do our engineering. We get the permit from RIDOT, we get the permit from RIDAM, we work with the town's engineering, Rick Rogers and/or a planning consultant, to get the roadway design and the stormwater drainage and the sediment erosion control plan. So we've got, now we've got all those things done, we file them and say, here's the conditions of preliminary approval, evidence that we've met those conditions, and then we come back with a final plan. That's how we would like to see the process go. It's streamlined, but it makes sense in terms of not throwing good money after bad, spending money at the right time.
We understand that. Ashley, do you think we can work something out?
If, yeah, I mean, generally, the problem is that if somebody fills a checklist with items and says, you know, "not applicable" or "I need relief," or, you know, it becomes problematic for me to certify the application complete, but if the board feels comfortable with an application, this particular application, and you don't have to vote, but just give me your general feeling, then I'm, you know, I'll work with them to move that application to the board, just reminding you that you're essentially approving something with, like, no engineering. You're approving it conditionally, but I don't want to put that application in front of you until I know, you know that it's coming and you're all on board with that approach.
Yeah. So we're taking things a little out of order here, but we see the big picture. We understand what we're trying to achieve, I think. I'm comfortable, I'm entirely comfortable with that approach.
And it may be a situation where instead of final getting done administratively, it comes back to the board because you've never seen a fully engineered plan, and so maybe we do it that way.
Sure, I think that's appropriate.
That's right.
Yep.
I'm okay with it. I would like, though, I would like the planning board to do final, so that we actually, as you said, see a fully engineered plan.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
But otherwise, I...
So we're just taking things a little out of our normal order.
And I'm fine with that as long as you're all fine with it so that you're not surprised by what you see and ask me why I put this on an agenda.
Rosemary, you promise?
I promise nothing.
Well, I think there's a consensus here that that's, that what you're, you know, that getting a rural compound approach makes a lot of sense here.
That's why I asked the question, what, conventional versus rural?
Yeah, so you started it.
I mean, because the gravel, you know, when I saw the gravel and the...
I did the same thing in reviewing the plans and kept looking for the word "compound" or "rural," and didn't, right.
You know, method you'd take.
The only other thing I'll raise is that you will have to provide some kind of yield so that we know what the relief is. Is it, you know...
The amount of dimensional relief.
The amount of dense, the percentage of density relief. We're not meeting 50%, but we're, you know, at 35 or whatever.
All right.
We'll revive our conventional subdivision sketch and double-check the numbers, and that'll tell us how much acreage area we're short, the minimum required.
I think the consensus is positive, you know, with this.
Yes, consensus is positive, so... We're not voting, we're simply giving our opinion. Good.
All right, great.
Okay, so...
Thank you. So you're not voting, but we're getting a nod.
You can work with Ashley and maybe Nathan, too, and then we'll look forward to you coming back, and I think it's, I think we like the concept, so let's move forward with it.
Thank you. We appreciate you working with us. It is unique, and it's a good solution.
Articles, let me see, Article 8.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number four on our agenda, and this is also a concept plan review for a proposed major land development. This would involve roughly a 21,000-square-foot self-storage unit on Bear's Den Road. Bear's Den Road is...
He's going to plug it in there.
Plug it on, oh, I need to find that for you, I guess, right?
Bear's Den Road is up by the Fall River border off Fish Road, and the lot we're talking about is directly behind the old Knights of Columbus Hall, which is now a church. So it's up near the Fall River border, and I think we are having technical difficulties So we'll take a pause while we solve our technical difficulties.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, good evening. My name is Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer, offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. With me is Steve Madeiros. Steve is the co-owner of 401 Storage. If we can get technology to work with us, I'd like to just go through a quick PowerPoint presentation to illustrate our proposal. As you know, Mr. Chairman, we're here for concept review and just want to solicit your thoughts and your comments on the project prior to us proceeding.
So are we putting something up on the screen?
I hope to.
Are you? Excellent. It's concept plan. Is there a checklist?
For what?
Concept plan.
Yeah. Yeah, there is.
She doesn't have one.
So I think we're going to let the applicant make a presentation, brief, hopefully.
Brief.
Brief, and then we'll just give our input and our feedback.
Thank you. So just in terms, you were just saying, where are we in the community? That's the Fall River-Tiverton line. As you know, Fish Road, Bear's Den Road, which the subject parcel has frontage on, and as we head into Fall River, Mariano Bishop Road. In terms specifically, Mr. Chairman, assess this plat 103, Lot 116. This lot's just shy of five acres. It's entirely in your industrial zone. Here we go. Life becomes easier. So as you know, Mr. Chairman, directly east of Waters Church, when we look closer at the subject parcel, there we go, we've had the area of freshwater wetlands delineated, smaller, isolated wetland, under today's new DEM regulations are going to have a 25-foot buffer zone. The larger wetland, all the way to the east, has a 50, and then both of them have that new 20-foot primary structure, meaning we can work within that area, but we can no longer put buildings in that area without asking for variances from DEM. So you see the building envelope. Our proposal is to put a three-story self-storage facility up on the front of the parcel or all the way to the west of the parcel. It's going to be framed with a 14-foot-wide, one-way entrance in, excuse me. Let me just get you back. I just wanted to show you a rendering of the subject parcel. There we go.
Take your time.
Yeah, I think the computer's having a little... So that's a rendering, an artist's rendering from Dean Architects. That's what we plan on the building looking like. It is three stories in terms of massing. We've tried to incorporate a lot of the New England concepts in terms of the windows and the six-over-six panes. You see some of the Adirondack-type detail as well as the fake stone along the front. We have a variety of projects that we would love people to look upon to see what you can expect respectfully going forward. This is a first-class operation. It's very neat. The owners are here to answer a lot of those questions. They have a little bit different of a business plan that you would anticipate for some of the storage facilities. So you can see that, that's the three-story facility. In terms of, it'll be framed by, we wanted to put a one-way in. Proposed parking is very minimal. As you know, Mr. Chairman, in a facility like this, which is a nice option, you have very low impact in terms of impervious lot coverage because of the low amount of parking that's required for the uses. We wanted to also have a designated one-way out, and a lot of this is done for strategy in terms of security of the parcel. 30-foot-wide drive aisles programmatically is what is necessary, and then there's a potential for a second phase. That's another 16,600-square-foot footprint, but when it's three stories, you can see it's almost 50,000 square feet. That would be connected by an access road and have only an out gate there. So again, we want to do something by right in terms of not asking for any dimensional relief from your building setback, describing a program that's large enough to serve our needs, but will be with outside of all DEM setbacks. And then you can see those three blue lines that came across. That way, we can have this as a gated, secured facility for multiple phases if we choose. In terms of stormwater, we have different mitigation areas for different appurtenances. I don't know enough about the soils yet to size the stormwater basins, but in terms of topography, these are good locations as to where they would fall. We've proposed a small septic area in that westernmost corner. Again, one of the benefits of this use, we only have one or two employees, and so the bathrooms are just for the employees, and that means that septic system is very small in size, smaller than, respectfully, a single-family home. Fortunate for us, we have water right outside for domestic and fire protection, and then in term of permitting, which is what we want to discuss with the community tonight, we're here for our concept review. So we gained some comments, positive and negative. We'd like to hear from you. We also believe this is going to be before, if we file prior to January 1, master plan, we've got to go to DEM for our wetlands permit, our septic permit, the water department, fire department, back before you at preliminary and final. So I know that was a lot, Mr. Chairman, but again, be happy to hear from you, members of the board, and again, we have the owner here that can answer some operational questions, things such as site lighting, trash removal, noise, anything of the such.
So I'll ask my colleagues, does anybody would like to start? Rosemary, did you want to start?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name again.
My name's Joe Casali, and I'm a professional engineer.
In the town of Tiverton, we have accepted streets and non-accepted streets, and Bear's Den Road is a non-accepted, unaccepted street in the town of Tiverton, and you have to have frontage on an accepted street. And if it doesn't have it, the new applicant is supposed to bring it up to town standards because of stormwater management, and the DPW director can back me up, because I checked the town record and I also checked the office to see if it was, it is not town-accepted, even though it looks like it, because I was down it yesterday, and so that's my spiel.
Thank you.
So Bear's Den Road, apparently, and we'll confirm this with Rick Rogers, who is here with us tonight, is not, has not been accepted by the town as a town road. It is town land, I believe, but it is not an accepted town road, and we'll ask Rick what that means. Rick, if you'd like to address that right now, why don't we do that? Why don't you come up in and speak into the mic? I actually drove down it a week or two ago. It's very narrow, and there are a lot of single-family homes across the street, so if we proceed with this, we're going to have to be very sensitive to those homeowners and make sure that the building is attractive, that there's good landscaping, that the lighting is not obtrusive, all kinds of issues. We all know that these self-storage units don't attract a lot of traffic, but Rick, go right ahead and tell us about the status of the road and what that means.
Thank you, Stu. I probably will not be giving you the answers that you want or need tonight. I would say it's DPW's understanding that a portion of Bear's Den Road is a town-accepted road. All of it is a town road, but it's not all-town-accepted road, and as far as having to have frontage or not, that's not something under DPW's purview, so I don't know the answer to that.
So we'll have to ask our legal counsel to investigate, to investigate that.
And DPW, Stu, is happy to look in our records to find out exactly what portion, if any, is accepted, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Rick, I have your list. I don't see it listed here.
I spoke with your secretary yesterday, and she checked it, too.
Okay, thank you.
She thought it was a portion, but she said it's not on the, it's not on the
It's not on the list.
...record there. And I sat on the street committee, as you remember, but, you know, even though it's wide and it's patched and, you know, and I know all the problems you have with the stormwater and it's very wooded now, and where's that water going to go? So just bringing it out for the record.
Well, thank you all. At this time, I certainly cannot disagree or agree with you, but I don't doubt that Todd and Rosemary are correct, but for me to know for sure, I'd have to look on our records.
That's why we love you, Rick.
Anybody else? Can anybody else have comments?
Mr. Chairman, just, I don't want to derail the conversation, so if this is a newbie question, I'll take it offline, but can you clarify what that would mean to the applicant if indeed they have to take steps to make it... take steps to make it, to get through this fact that it's a non-accepted street?
So, Bill, I think that they would have to bring the road up to town standards if we were to approve the project.
Okay. And is the applicant clear on what that actually means practically speaking?
My general understanding is this is probably a town road in a town right-of-way, but it's not completely up to town standards. Therefore, your counsel hasn't accepted it. What the standards that they're lacking in, I don't know enough of that now. So that's something we'll have to look at. It doesn't sound like it's with, it may be stormwater, but, you know. Well, we'll ask the Public Works Director, you know, does trash, is serviced on this portion of the road? Is it plowed? Do school buses go down there, emergency vehicles, so forth, so on?
I'm going to open this up to the audience. This is not a public hearing, but nevertheless, since neighbors are here, if anybody would like to speak, I'm going to call on them to, I'll open it up for anybody who has questions or comments later. Though I want to make sure that all members of the Planning Board have had a chance to make comments and ask questions. Yes, Adam?
Earlier this year. So their actual GPS survey located.
Right. Again, I'd just like to say that if this moves forward, we would be, we would probably like to have this considered as both a major land development and a development plan review concurrently.
Doesn't qualify for both?
It doesn't?
No.
Why not?
Because the
The ordinance
The ordinance specifically lists what qualifies for both, and this use is not one of them.
This use is not, oh, I see. So what would you suggest, Ashley? I would suggest DPR because it involves some aesthetic items that are not even listed in major land development. But it's probably feedback that the applicant would like to have tonight.
Understood. I mean, it's
Because as of January 1, aren't we going to proceed into the new regulations, which don't allow the DPR and MLD?
Yeah, they do.
I thought specifically you can only be one or the other.
You can only do one or the other, but you can't, you can't be made to do both for this project anyway because it doesn't qualify. In the zoning ordinance, it specifically says what uses
We have to be
Go through major land development and development plan review, and this use is not one of those. So it's an either-or situation. I mean, it's the board's purview. If you would prefer to do the development plan review, remember that that's a one-shot application. It's 65 days. You can require the public hearing as part of that. The major land development is the, you know, they're here for the first step, but then the three-step process for the master preliminary and final. I don't know if you all have a preference either. When you do development plan review, as I said, it's not a staggered process. It's basically everything upfront.
I mean, we actually have one before the Warwick zoning board tonight went through as a major land development. So it's a more linear process, but it's up to the regulatory agencies. Whatever the town feels, that's the process we would adhere to.
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't say that you're giving up the ability to weigh in on the aesthetics of the building. But there are some things in development plan review that are more specific to architectural design.
Right. Well, let's, so I think the applicant needs to take a look at our Article 20 in our zoning. Article 20 is the development plan review. It's a quicker process. It's only a one-step process. But it does talk about good building design, fitting in with the neighborhood. It talks about a lot of, a lot of the more visually aesthetic issues. So you should probably take a look at that criteria and see if you think you can match it. And if you can, that would probably be the route that I would personally prefer. Otherwise, you can do the, you can go through the major land development, which is going to take you longer and will still require, I think, attractive building design, really good landscaping, lighting. We might even request some pedestrian amenities. And so so that's all, that's all I had to say. So let me call upon the audience and see if anybody in the audience would have, has any comments or suggestions? Yes, and questions? Yes, I see a woman. Why don't you stand up here and tell us your name and your address?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Cosgrove. I live at 120 Bear's Den. My issue with any of this is that Bear's Den is extraordinarily narrow. It is not in good shape. When the water comes in, and in the wintertime, it does freeze over. When the water comes in, it gets under the tar, it cracks the tar. When we have storms, I want to know where all that water is going to go if we don't have the woods across the street. My yard is at the water table. We get an inch of rain, I've got two inches of water in my yard. And that's with the trees across the street. When we moved into Tiverton 35 years ago, I had an in-ground septic. I can no longer have that because of the water. I have an OWTS. I also have problems with my well. I have an industrial system, and I'm concerned about any kind of development or blasting if it's necessary because there's also a rock ledge across Bear's Den. I can't imagine any more water coming down Bear's Den. And in the wintertime, it is absolutely treacherous.
Did you just say that you have a well?
Yes, sir.
Don't you have, aren't you on the North Tiverton Fire District System?
I am not. I have a well, and my neighbor has a well.
So they do not, so there is no potable water service?
No, sir.
And so you folks are on wells?
Correct.
That's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yes.
I don't know if the applicant knew that either.
That's a real concern.
That is an issue. And the topography is an issue because I noticed when I was there, not only the narrowness of the street, but also the wetness. Of course, it's been a very wet summer.
Yes. But even when it's not a wet summer, it's wet down there. Even in the middle of a drought, I can walk through my yard and I squish.
Well, we, you know, the engineers will have to take a good, hard look at that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. And anybody else? Yes, certainly.
George Ferreira? 126, sorry. George Ferreira, 126 Bear's Den Road. We own the garage that's there. That's been a paper road forever, since my grandfather was there. So there's no water, there's no streetlights, there's no septic, there's no anything. So when he develops this or tries to develop this, everything's going to go everywhere. If they do have to break ledge, like she said, all of the water that we drink will be contaminated. Now, they have developed one street over, which is Linwood Street. Once that happened, our water got even worse, which is the fur of a line. But as soon as they developed, everything, everything came our way, and it just destroyed a lot of what we have. So if this continues, we're not going to have anything.
Linwood is the street just on the far riverside of the border. And it's where a number of houses were put in
Full-on development.
About 10 years ago.
Roughly, yep.
Yep, okay.
And once that happened, destroyed our water. We can't even drink it now. We have to have purifiers constantly, so that's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments, some issues. Anybody else? I don't see any hands from the audience. Any other comments from, comments, questions, suggestions from the Planning Board?
Concerns of the residents that you spoke. It's an extremely wet area. And since those houses got put in on Linwood, you're hard-pressed to walk back there without being at six inches of water at any time of year. I mean, it's a very wet area. The water pushes that blacked up around. I mean, it's sitting on a swamp. That whole area just flows. So water drainage is going to be a huge concern and something I would have to pay really, really attention to.
Well, if you look at some of the old maps, it actually describes that area as Bear's Den Swamp.
That's where I live, sir.
Well, okay, thank you very much. I hope you got some feedback and maybe not what you would hope to get, but
That's what we're here for. We appreciate your time.
There are challenges, but we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so that brings us to Agenda Item Number Five. The first item on the agenda is Abigail Estates. This is the 12-lot subdivision that was approved a number of years ago. It's been largely built out, but not everything has been totally completed. And I think, I think that what we're being asked to do is make a recommendation that the bond be called. The surety bond, the performance bond be called. And because some work has not been done. So I think I'd like to call on Rick Rogers. Well, let me call, if the homeowners association is here, and apparently they are, and we have legal representation. Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Come forward. Why don't you explain what you would like the Planning Board to do? And then we can call on Rick Rogers or DPW Director because he's on top of this situation.
That would be excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're exactly right. So only the Town Council has the authority to actually hold the developer in default. But it was our feeling that if we went to the Town Council first, they would say, well,
Go to the Planning Board.
You go to the Planning Board. They deal with this kind of stuff, so go there first. We wanted to follow the right process. As set forth in the letter, and there's multiple correspondence, which I'm not sure if you've been made aware of. But certainly in the last one, you'll see that this development project, Abigail Estates, was approved in 2013, so 10 years ago. It took a long time to get built. Ultimately, the deadline for the public improvements was August 17, 2021. For the past 18 months or so, I've been working with the Developers Council. Solicitor Romano has been copied on many of those correspondence. And we've repeatedly been given assurances that the developer is working on it. And our, you know, my clients live on-site, and frankly, that's just not been the case. And so by recommending to the Town Council that the developer be held in default, this will set up a timeline on which the developer needs to perform lest he be found in default. I do believe that in the bond itself, that the Town Council would have to give 30 days' notice to the developer before finding him in default. So it's not like he'd have no time to complete what needs to be done. If you make this recommendation tonight, we'll go to the council. If the council sees things our way, there'll be a 30-day period. So we're really looking at, you know, two to three months. And we just want to make sure that the developer is living up to his commitments. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have my clients here tonight, and they're happy to speak as well if you feel you need more information.
There's an attorney here from the developer, too. Mr. Bowe Akers.
So we have the attorney for the developer. And would you like to make some comments?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us. Overall, I have read the correspondence from Attorney Monti. I've reviewed that. Understanding the frustration of the homeowners and the situation, there's a punch list with things to be done, many of them being maintaining or basically landscaping as far as mowing, clearing, the drainage infrastructure, and as well as installation of signs, streetlights, and the roadway. So I've been working with my client to get these, the ball rolling, get things done here as far as the punch list items go. And the contractors, that of Narrekanz and Improvement Co. and Foley Construction, or Excavating, I believe. And I know they've been working with DPW in regards to those things. I know there's stop signs as of late that have been put up. I spoke to my client today, who said they've, he's ordered the street signs. And so I'm working on getting a timeline of, you know, how long this would take, maybe two, three weeks worth of work altogether, as that can be done. But importantly, as far as the roadway goes, I spoke to that, the paving contractor today, Narrekanz and Improvement Co. And he said, as far as getting the, tearing up the binder coat, putting in the binder coat, making improvements to that, and putting on the surface coat and the tack coat, that can be done in one to two days. He said he's operating in Tiverton pretty much every other day, has the equipment nearby, and can get that done once we have the green lights. I think Attorney Solicitor Romano made a good point to both, to both counsel for both parties, that there's things that need to be done on both ends, my clients included. And one of the issues that the Department of Public Works has as of now is there are certain heavy construction that still needs to be done on individual sites, which my client doesn't have ownership of or control of. Lot 8, which I'm not sure exactly what address that would be today, has a longer driveway that hasn't been done, so you'd have to bring in trucks and equipment to do that. I went for a drive-through the neighborhood yesterday just to see where things stand myself as of late, and I saw that there's things that have been mowed and cleared. I also saw that there was a dozer on one of the lots likely for spreading loam. Narrekanz, it. Improvement Co. spoke with the director, I believe, yesterday at a site visit, if I'm not mistaken. And just that, that piece of equipment alone, if they were to put in the roadway, would damage that. So, you know, those things need to be taken care of, too, on the homeowners' end as well. So, you know, we have two, two parties here that need to get things done so we can get this thing taken care of. And I am working with my client on getting those punch list items done. And I have, we have contractors, my client has contractors that are ready to go.
Okay. Todd, did you want to make some comments at this point? Or would you like Rick Rogers?
I think Rick, because he has the most recent knowledge of the status.
So Rick Rogers is our DPW Director.
Hi, thank you. It's a pleasure to see you again after a few minutes. I understand, you know, both points of view, so to speak. DPW's position has been, still is. We do not want the surface course of asphalt placed until the site work on all the lots has been done. As mentioned by Mr. Ruggiero's legal counsel, I was there last week, and there was still a track dozer right on the side of the road. We don't want anything that could ruin the surface course. And that's been our position and still is our position. As far as calling the bond, that would not, that's not my call. But that's not something that I find that would be effective. Because even if the bond was called and somebody was hired, we would not allow them to place the surface course. And until the surface course is placed, a town road cannot be sent through the process of being a town-accepted road. of being a town-accepted road.
Rick, how about things like street signs and lighting, lighting fixtures? I noticed that they haven't been put up yet, and sidewalks.
Yes, the.
Can that be done?
Okay, Stu, excellent questions. The street signs could be put up, the stop signs, the name could be installed. The surface course on the sidewalk, as long as there's no traffic over that, and a large portion of the sidewalk still has some vegetative clearing to do, some mowing, as long as it's rubber-tired equipment, that's fine, as long as they don't cross the sidewalk. The sidewalk binder is installed. We're not a big fan of the surface course being placed prior to all the work being done, but we don't prohibit it, as long as anything crossing that sidewalk is rubber-tired and they don't do any damage, and they do it in restricted areas. That's their call, just like replacing the binder in the damaged areas is their call, whether they do that now or later. But the big factor is the surface course of asphalt cannot be placed until all the site work is accomplished, and prior to that being installed, the road cannot even go into the acceptance process.
If I may, just briefly, I think we're sort of myopically focused on the roadway, and I tried to be very clear in my letter that the reason we'd like the developer to be held in default is because he's not completing the punch list items that he can complete, nor has he made almost any attempt to do that over the entirety of the portion I've been involved in this, which is about 18 months, despite repeatedly making promises and representations that these items would be complete. So, for example, I communicated with opposing council and said the streetlights aren't complete, and I got a response that said, yes, they are. I was there today, there's no streetlights. And this has been going on for about 18 months, and it's been over two years since the timetable that this board set for completion has passed. So, I don't see any justification for this board not to recommend to the council that the developer be found in default. I mean, it's two years overdue, and the drainage basin is, I mean, it's a mess.
Rick, Rick, if the, if the performance bond were called, would it cover the cost of the work that needs to be done, do you think?
I'd have to look and see what.
Because it's been 10 years since we set that, since the planning board would have set that.
Right. And I'm not sure, I am not a lawyer, I'm not sure calling the bond will really accomplish what you want to without the headaches that come with that. And that is, once the performance bond is called, is all the money called? And is that even legal or fair when the town's position is you cannot put the surface course down? So, whether you can segment a performance bond is unknown to me. And how much it is, I do not know. Again, that was, you know, a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, and many of these issues that have been mentioned tonight have carried on, and there should be. Ashley has found the files of this Abigail Estates, but there was plenty of correspondence in it. My question is, and I had asked, Ed, how much are we holding and what's the term you know on the bond?
No, I do not.
Okay. And I think he was gonna, did you check with Denise?
Do you have the answer, Beau?
I think so. I have that printed it up on my way over here, and I believe it was reduced to about $280,000, if I'm not mistaken. Just trying to pull it up to make sure I have that number right. The original, I know the original number of the bond was 500 and.
560,000.
And it was reduced.
It was, it was reduced. I don't know what the reduction was. I was unable to get those documents.
There's a file.
200, I believe it's 280,000.
I mean, in the past, the planning board has been the one that's called the bond, and I agree with Rick. I mean.
So, Trish.
So, if I understand Rick correctly, there are lots, individual lots left that have site work.
As of my review, Trish, as of last week, yes.
And how many lots?
Three.
Three. There are three lots. And who is the owner of those lots right now?
I don't know who the owners are, but I guess a question I would have, are they represented by the HOA? Are they members of the HOA?
So, I can answer this question. They're my clients, so three of the homeowners. There is no HOA either, so, but I represent the 12-lot owners.
So, the HOA was never established?
So, the HOA, the developer sold these lots without first creating the HOA, and then after the fact, recorded documents in the land evidence records, fabricating an HOA, which we believe is illegal under Rhode Island law. So, there were a lot of mistakes made here, and I have 12 clients who have sidewalks that aren't complete, they've got, you know, if anybody has driven through here, you know, it's not the finished article. And I'm not saying that the bond needs to be called because the road is incomplete. I'm saying the bond needs to be called because there are good six or seven other punch list items that the developer has known about for 18 months and not, not done anything to try to complete. So, I, you know, I think it's, you know, it's not more complicated than that.
Bill? Yeah, so, do we have the complete punch list available? I didn't see that in the packet.
Yeah, actually, Rick put one together, and it was distributed in hard copy to me.
Okay. Well, regardless.
Quite a, quite a, two years ago.
Well, the latest one that I remember was 8-4 of this year.
Right.
And it was mailed, emailed out on 8-8.
Sorry.
Well, I just, clearly, the road is a major factor, but there seems to be a good handful of other things that for, it sounds like 18 months, and admittedly, I'm just being exposed to this this evening, why hasn't that been completed?
Well, the streetlights in particular.
Yeah, I mean, things that are not tied to Rick's concern here. It's not either or, it should be both and.
Right.
And 18 months seems to be a fair amount of time here.
So, the developer should be making a good faith effort to do those items on the punch list that can be done now.
Which are 18 months past due, if I'm right.
And some of them sound to be really simple and really cheap, like, like putting up the proper, you know, the proper signage for the, for the name of the street.
So, we heard this evening from council that signs have been ordered.
Yes.
What about, what's, what's the response to the other items on the punch list?
So, don't have every answer here you're probably looking for. I'm trying to fix the issue here with getting these things done. Stop signs have been, have been put in place. I drove by yesterday to confirm that. A majority of the punch list items, which I have a copy here that I've scribbled on a little bit, if you'd like to see it, but this is the 8-4 copy, have to do with basically clearing and mowing the vegetation around the drainage infrastructure. Those things, like you said, admittedly, aren't the most difficult things to do. We have a contractor on board to take care of those things.
So, having a contractor on board is one thing. Actually executing on it is a whole.
They have.
That's today, you know?
Could I just, I just want to briefly interject as well. So, in recommending to the council that the developer be held in default, you're not holding the developer in default tonight. This is really an opportunity, by making this recommendation, to get the developer to complete these items timely. Then the council will have another meeting just like this, where I'll go through the same facts, and, you know, maybe the landscape will have changed in 30 days' time. I think October 3rd is the, or October 10th is the meeting of the council that we'd be targeting. And then there's a 30-day period, grace period, before they can call the bond. So, by making this recommendation tonight, I don't think you're being too harsh. I think you're just creating the timeline that the developer has sort of failed to give us, and we've made multiple requests for a timeline. We were given assurances we would get one, and it just never came. So, you know, I think this is a really important issue for my clients that are here. They've been frustrated, and this board has an opportunity to provide relief, which it's not always in that position, where it can, can provide a remedy. But you have that opportunity tonight, so we request you, you take that action.
So, I'd like to ask about the three homeowners who were still in the process of construction, because it's important that they get that done and get that heavy equipment out of the neighborhood, so that the, so that the street and the sidewalk can be put in. I'm asking a question. Mr. Monte, have, have they given any indication of what the timeframe is?
So, I'm not sure.
Because once that's done, then the developer, then there's no reason why the developer should.
Lot 8, Andrew.
Yep.
One is Lot 5, which they're in the process, that's where the bulldozer is.
Yep.
And then one is Lot 10.
I can tell you, based on Rick's emails me last week, 84 Lynn Road.
So, but I think that the upshot is those three folks aren't, aren't here tonight, so I don't have that information for you.
They, they need to be here tonight, I think. They need to be here tonight, and, and giving us an idea of.
I can say, I'm Lot 10, and the site work's starting on Saturday.
So, you're one of the three.
Yeah, we have.
It's been finished for a year, but I've had people drop out during.
Can you come up and give your name just for the purposes of our minutes?
Michael Pirella, Lot 10, it's 55 is the address, Lynn Road, or Line Road. I don't know if anyone knows what it actually is, but Lynn, yeah. But yeah, I've had people to do the, actually landscaping and lawn, drop out, and finally have someone starting on Saturday, so.
Good.
Should be completed within a month or so.
And driveways.
Yeah, driveway, yeah.
So, I think, I think this is not actually one of the lots.
That's holding things up.
That's holding things up. But again, and I can't emphasize enough, you know, there's a host of issues that go far beyond. If this were the case where it was just my client's actions were holding things up, I wouldn't be here before you asking for this action. 18 months of attempted negotiations resulted in us being here tonight, and, you know, these people are just looking for something.
If I, if I may interject real quick, like I said, I understand the frustration that his clients have with my client. My client, as Chairman has mentioned, has held up to one aspect, which is likely the largest aspect here. We're talking about a punch list. Now, I don't know how many people here are involved in construction. I grew up in it since I was a kid. Punch list items are not the most intensive cost items we've taken care of. The reason for them not being done to date in full, I don't have that answer. However, I'm working to get that answer for Mr. Monte and his clients, and a timeframe to have these things done. Some of them have been done, such as approvals for the drainage, et cetera. And then most of the items here say inspect and repair as needed. Inspect and repair, debris, litter from surface stormwater infrastructure is needed. Mowing, clear brush on surface stormwater infrastructure. And then when it comes to the paving, I spoke with the contractor, like I said, today. The contractor said he can have these things taken care of in one or two days, once the issues with the individual site lots have been taken care of on the homeowner's end, so that they wouldn't have to repave the road twice.
We have a question from Adam.
I don't have a question. I'm in total agreement with Mr. Monte, but in the homeowners, heavy equipment aside and a little bit of road surface, there's a ton of other work that can be done that should have been done by now.
Yes.
And he really needs to be held accountable.
So, I'm, I'm working on, on getting these things taken care of. As I said today, street signs are on their way, and I'm working with my client to get a timeframe here to take care of these punch list items that fit one page and need to be taken care of. That being said, if, if the board does vote, the town does move forward calling the bond, not only will be, there will there be issues with, again, hiring contractors to get things done, and still being held up by individual lots, and these remaining punch list items, and then this will, you know, very likely end up in litigation as well, tying up things further rather than trying to get this, this taken care of. And that's, that's where I stand today, as far as representing my client, is to help get this taken care of.
I would, I would caution my colleagues about making any recommendation to town council before we have thought through what this might mean for the town of Tiverton and for liability. What kind of burden are we putting on the town to, if it does call the bond, to take whatever monies remain in that bond amount? We don't even know how much that is. We think it's in the vicinity of $300,000. Will that $300,000 cover the cost? Because once that bond is pulled, the developer can walk away, and then the liability is on the town of Tiverton to pick up the cost of the, of the streetlights and the, and the, the streetlights probably wouldn't cost that much, but, but doing the roadwork could be very expensive. Rick knows a whole lot more about that than anybody else in this room does, but I would hate to set in, into train, into motion, a train of events that could put the town of Tiverton at great financial liability.
And thank you, Stu, for another opportunity to speak. You hit one of the nails on the head, and that is, will it cover the cost? And we don't know, because I do remind Mr. Ruggiero's attorney that one of the requirements in the punch list is that DPW has to be given two days, working days, advance notice prior to any work being done. And as he mentioned, inspect and repair is necessary. That's one of the reasons we need the two days, working days notice, so we can be out there when they're performing these inspections, so we can review it with them, when we can, you know, get together with what repairs, if any, are needed. And the drainage, the stormwater mitigation, the paving, once they start repairing the binder, we don't know all those costs right now. But I take this opportunity to remind Mr. Ruggiero that he has to give us advance notice. Thank you.
Did you get advance notice on the work they did today?
No.
Have you received any notice, like, within the last 18 months of any work?
I have spoken with the asphalt contractor.
Has notice required for?
And within the, pardon me, Todd?
Is notice always required for work?
Notice is required for work, yes.
Like putting up signs?
We want to know ahead of time.
Okay.
But we're not going to yell and scream at somebody who installs a sign. That's something that's visible. But the concept is not for the developer to pick and choose when to notify us. It's so we know when the work is going on, so we can be there. And little, little things like signs, anybody can see, well, whether they're in the right position or not, we, we would like to know, even on something like that.
And I'll just, one final comment I have. I appreciate the liability concerns that the chairman spoke to. I do think that if you're not recommending that this developer be held in default, I mean, you set a deadline that was over two years ago for the completion of the public improvements. And then an attorney comes in and says, well, there might be litigation if you pull the bond. You're not even making that decision tonight. The town council can meet in an executive session and discuss whether there's liability concerns, you know, in a private forum with its solicitors. I think if you're, if you're not willing to do this tonight, you'll be sending a message that, you know, these deadlines really don't matter. And if, conversely, if you make the recommendation tonight to, to hold the developer in default, in all likelihood, you know, opposing council here is saying, well, this stuff just takes a couple of weeks, and, and they'll get it done before the, you know, 60 to 90 days it would actually take from, from today to, to hold the developer in default, if that is a true and accurate representation of what needs to be done.
And just to.
And just to clarify, in case I might have misled somebody, Mr. Monte, to your question, you said 18 months. Within the last month, 18 months? I don't remember what happened within the last 18 months. But within the last month, I have spoken only with the asphalt contractor.
Didn't an electrician contact you last week?
I did not speak with him. It was correspondence, but I did not speak with him.
Okay, we can, you know, we're going to go around and around and around on this.
I want to ask Rick a question, Stu, please.
Yes.
So you said you've been in contact with the road contractor, the street contractor?
The asphalt contractor, Adam.
What is his relationship with the developer right now? Do they have a contract in place? Has there been a deposit given?
He has represented himself as the asphalt contractor for Mr. Ruggiero. Whether they have a written contract or not, we don't get involved with that.
Okay.
So what is the pleasure of the planning board? I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to put this item, continue this item to our next meeting, which is coming up on the 3rd of October, so it's not that far away, and see if anything has been done by the contract, by the developer, anything significant. And at that point, maybe we'll have a better understanding of whether we should say... And then if we do go to Town Council with a recommendation to pull the bond, we can at least say, we, you know, we gave the developer an opportunity to show a good faith effort to make a serious, to make some serious progress on the checklist items.
Stu, if we decide to go that route, can we have some purchase orders and signed contracts to look at from between the contractors?
Well, we would want something really concrete to show that the developer is working in good faith with the owners and with the town.
We need more than just work.
Yeah, no, but that may be the history, but this is a new item coming before us. This is not, I don't remember this coming before us ever before, so.
Stu?
Yes.
So, you know, personally, my patience with some knuckle-headed developers is wearing thin, and this is not, if not with this developer, not the first time we've seen this in this town. But in order to, if we're going to consider doing this, and we were to continue this to our next meeting, what would be very helpful, I think, for the planning board would be to, A, find out exactly what the value of that bond is, because we don't know. So that would be number one. Secondly, I would like to have, and I didn't get one of these, but I would like to know as of today, this date, exactly what is the punch list. And then I would like to know by October 2nd, what, if anything, has actually been completed from the existing punch list of today. And finally, while this might be a little bit difficult, I would like to know, based on what's left, whether or not the existing bond will cover that, and whether or not there's enough funds there in the event that the town did decide to pull the bond, that when, at that point, the developer walks away, because they will, that there is funds to finish all of those things. If I had that information in front of me, I would feel more comfortable about being able to make a recommendation to the Town Council that would at least get the Town Council started and not have them be in the place that we are right now, which is...
A lot of unanswered questions that are really vital to the future of the town of Tivernin, exactly.
We don't have enough information to know for sure whether or not we can make a cognizant recommendation. So that would be my, if we could have those things by our next meeting, then I think we could feel comfortable about...
Then we can make a decision.
A recommendation.
And we'll know the consequences of our decision. Peter?
I would just ask, in addition to that, and Todd, maybe you know the answer, but contractually, is there any other mechanism or tool that this board or the town has in terms of if the obligations have not been met beyond the bond? Are there any other triggers that we have legally? Fines, stop work for this developer in this community at least? Or I don't know, what are other options available to leverage making action happen? Do we have any?
I'm sure that we could file an action in the Superior Court, requiring action. I'd have to think about it a lot more. I don't think fines is the issue here.
I just want to make one final comment. So the punch list was affixed to the letter to the planning board, followed by a series of photographs. I just, you know, regardless of, you know, what it, the work's not been getting done. So this idea that, well, if we pull the bond, we might not have enough money to complete it, so we need to let the developer complete it, but the developer's not completing it. So it's kind of this circular thing. I strongly disagree on behalf of my clients with any action tonight, other than a recommendation for the incompletion of the public works, given that it's been over two years since the deadline set by this board. I think that is, you know, it's the only appropriate consideration for this board to consider. So on behalf of my clients, I strongly urge the board to take this action tonight, and with that, I'll, you know, make no further remarks.
Yes, Dick.
Now, speaking from a position of three-quarters of one meeting experience here on this case, I did read the documents, and I went out and took a look at it. And to me, as an outsider, it looked definitely like the guy at developer has been dragging his feet for 10 years, where 10 months past the last deadline they were given to get the thing done.
Two years.
And you look at it, and the homes are beautiful, the yards are well-kept, except Mother Nature has taken over that sidewalk. That's the most horrible-looking excuse for a sidewalk. I know it's not finished, but if somebody would have just, if the developer had sent somebody in with a weed whacker and cut some of the weeds, I mean, those things are up 18 inches, you know, I mean, how can you really enjoy it? The people that bought homes and did everything and are not holding this up, it's like the developer got into a position of extremists and decided, well, we'll blame the homeowners for the reason that I'm not completing after 10 years and not much history of actually accomplishing these things. You know, we've got nothing to base, you know, the goodwill that he's going to do this and really take care of it.
I understand Attorney Monte and his client's position. I understand your position, member of the chairman, member of the board. On that note, I know that a weed whacker or something of the sort was taken out this past week, and there, I drove by yesterday morning and saw that along the sidewalks, at least some of the weeds were cut down. I know that work still needs to be completed, as Council smirks, but nonetheless, I'm working to get those things done. He wants the board to recommend calling the bond now. I like Chairman Hardy's position on continuing this out to October 3rd, getting the planning board, getting things together to see what the liabilities would be on their end, as well as giving me a time to work with my client this month to put a fire there, to have these punch list items knocked out, and then the board can see where things stand in October.
So I think Rick has a comment or a recommendation.
It would be a question. My position has been clearly stated, but a question I would have is, if the town pulls the bond, two questions. If the town pulls the bond, who is responsible for getting the work done in a timely manner? And if it's the town, does the town want to take on that responsibility? Those are two big questions and one major headache. If, the first question is, the answer is the town.
Just the planning board sets deadlines, right? And if those deadlines aren't met, it's in the planning board's purview to say, you didn't meet the deadline, therefore, we're recommending to the Town Council that the developer be held in default for failure to meet the timeline, and it's an issue for the council to think about that recommendation and look at it in the broader scheme. And again, the council can meet in executive session with its attorneys and determine, you know, these liability issues, but I do think the purview of the board is, you had August 17th, 2021 was your deadline. Did you meet the deadline? No. There've been negotiations for 18 months, still no result. You know, that's my feeling on it as an advocate. I think the Town Council is well-positioned to weigh the overall balances, and this board should act on its deadlines and what's well within its purview.
If I may make one final thing, I understand he's pushing to have a deadline, to have these past deadlines met, and I believe here, if having the board consider these things, me presenting information, further information for October, does in fact help Attorney Monte and his clients in putting a pressure and a timeframe right there upon my client to continue these punch list items. That's all.
Bill, I think you had a comment tonight.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a path to both and and not either or here, right? And so what Trish has alluded to in terms of hard data is absolutely appropriate. I happen to agree with Council Monte that we're not making, we're not making a decision to pull the bond, right? We are merely making a recommendation to the Town Council to pursue that discussion. I'm looking at the Town Council meetings scheduled right now. I mean, doubtful that they would talk about this on the 26th, so maybe it's October 10th by the time they get it, right? So how come we couldn't make that recommendation to the Town Council and explain to them all of the data and facts that we have put into motion to secure for them, and maybe we're able to give that information to them by the time of their meeting? Let's assume maybe it gets taken up on the 10th. That way, they have the facts, and they can actually have a worthwhile, fact-based conversation. But again, we're merely making a recommendation. We are not casting the final vote here. That's why I feel like it can be a both and and not a...
But we are doing our due diligence by giving the Town Council some of the answers to the questions that Tricia enumerated. And we have also given the developer a little more opportunity to, a little more time to show a good faith effort. And I don't think we're penalizing the homeowners because they've been waiting 10 years. Can you wait another three weeks? Yeah, you probably can. I would recommend to my colleagues that we go that route, that we use the next couple of weeks before, we only have three weeks before our next meeting, to get as many facts together as we can, that we can then pass on to Town Council when we do make a recommendation one way or the other. But if we do recommend to Town Council that they pull the bond, I think it's really incumbent on us to give them answers that we do not have tonight. So I would make that, I would make a motion that we go that route, and that we, and I think that the key things are, that we'd like to know is exactly what is the amount of the bond. We would like probably from Rick, an estimate of how much work he can do if he had that bond money at his disposal. Tricia, help me out here with a list of other items. We would like a much better understanding of where the checklist is right now, so that we can see if the developer has done anything significant in the three weeks. So I think that's important. And we also need to have a little more information on those two house lots, because it turns out now that there are only two house lots where, there are still three, okay, where more work needs to be done and is that work being done in a timely fashion? And if not, are there reasons why that can't be done? So I would, you know, with all of that, as part of my motion, I would suggest a continuation of this item to our October 3, 2023, regular monthly meeting, and then we'll have, I think we'll have a better basis for making a decision.
If I may add some historical information here.
We'd actually like a second, and then we can have a discussion.
For purposes of discussion.
Okay, so Tricia has seconded for purposes of discussion. Now you may go ahead.
Apparently, there's been a change in policy or procedure here. It's always been the planning board that's called a bond. I mean, so I'm glad to hear, because I've been sitting on this board a long time, and I think Mr. Ruggiero has had ample time to help these residents.
Thank you.
And he's just, you know, I don't know, sir, you say you've been in construction so long. How long have you been representing him? Was it Mr. Bransky that's been here before for him?
Yes, yes, he's my senior partner. And I've been with Attorney Bransky for about four years now.
This is your first go-around with us?
In this situation, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, and I feel for the residents, because they've just been led astray here. And I truly don't want to make this decision of pulling a bond tonight. I'd like to see, as Tricia mentioned, all the information. I'd like to also have a copy of the bond, or I can get it. And is there an expiration date on it?
As a double check, I pulled the notes from the meeting minutes regarding the bond, but as far as the most recent reduced bond, I didn't have a copy of that with me today.
Okay. And Ashley and Ed and Todd looked at the files? I mean, there's numerous, numerous correspondence and documentation on this development. It's been going on too long, and Mr. Ruggiero's come in.
We all agree on that.
And I think it should also be brought to the council's attention, and maybe Mr. Todd's attention, again, about the homeowners' association not being formed and what has happened with that. I mean, because they are responsible for a lot of things, but if it hasn't been turned over to them, I think that's a legal matter that needs to be pursued.
Any further comments? Yes, go ahead, Dick.
I would have felt a lot better about this had the applicant shown up tonight with a plan for accomplishing these and when they anticipated they would be done. And I think, if not sooner, I would certainly like to see that on the October 3 meeting, at least some kind of a plan. I mean, I don't know that would put us any further, but we may be able to show good faith by having accomplished some.
So a timetable that shows what needs to be done and when it's going to get done?
Yes.
So, yes, I would make that request, that be part of the backup materials for our next meeting. So you can take that to your client. Good.
The problem with that, Stu, is the development...
The problem with that, Stu, is the developer can write whatever he wants without some type of.
We understand, we understand that, we understand that, but we still have him on, now he's put it in writing. So, so Dick has, I think that's a good, good suggestion.
Just, my clients are curious if, if, if a few of them might share a few brief words. Obviously, it's at the discretion of, of the chairman, but did want to put that forward and have communicated that to me.
We, we have a motion and a second on the table, and I, I think that that time has come and gone. So we, we can, we cannot interrupt under, under parliamentary, under Robert's rules of order, we cannot have public comments at this particular point in time. So, so let's, let's dispatch with this motion and second. So is any other comments, questions?
Stu?
Yes.
So before I have a question, I, I would like to hear from our solicitor if he has an opinion or a suggestion on this.
If you want to continue it, you can certainly require the developer to complete the, the items on the punch list titled, "Items That May Be Performed At This Time." They've had that for over a year, or almost a year now, right? There's nothing holding them up, so that's how you can have some specificity to that. Alternatively, I was going to suggest you make a motion to recommend to the town council defaulting the bond if, if items that may be performed at this time are not completed by X date, whether that's there by the town council's next meeting or whatever date you set. Yeah. Because, and let me explain, one of my concerns is winter approaching.
Again, I know they're.
Now, the winter goes to the street, street work, I know, that requires three homeowners to complete their work, but it also goes to the sidewalk, sidewalk work, street lights that have to be put in. That's just a concern, and I think giving that extra impetus to the developer is probably necessary at this time, because I've been living with this, with Mr. Monty, with Mr. Bransky, all of this, and Mr. Rogers. We've been on the telephone way too often about this. So I think that's a middle ground, if it makes sense.
It goes back to the spirit of my comments from earlier.
Yes, thank you.
I would agree wholeheartedly, and that's where I thought Bill was going, was that since the council meeting falls after our deadline, we should make it a provision in this motion that we will forward a repeal of the bond unless those conditions are met by our meeting and we see proof of it on October 3rd, that those things have been finished on the punch list. And so he has to come in here and show that to us. It's ridiculous. These deadlines have been met and, or not met and scoffed. I think it's a great idea, and I would recommend we make that amendment to your, your motion.
Okay, so we, so we, but we need, we actually need a member of the planning board to make an amendment to my motion. So would a member of the planning board care to make that?
This is the newest conversation, so that would, as we said, we have till the next town meeting, it's what, it's like 60 days, right, till we get, I mean, for the bond is out, it winds up being, it's approximately 60 days till there's like an official default?
Probably longer, but yeah.
So, so do we save some of that time by doing it this way? Yeah. In order to get the work done sooner?
It, it, it depends. If the developer doesn't work, then we save some time. If this is just another, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, and it doesn't get done, then it doesn't take any time. But it, it, it does, I think it does, by adding that by, to the, to the motion, I think that it does give the council, again, more information, correct? Because if nothing's done, then, you know, that's pretty clear to the council that, you know, regardless of having the sort of damage that's hanging over this guy's head, he's just not going to do anything. And on the other hand, if a significant number of things are, are completed, then potentially there's a negotiation for the things that are left. But, you know, but I do think we need to know some more facts on this. I mean, I have a hard time saying I would recommend to the council that they pull a bond, and if the council says, how much is the bond, I don't know, you know, I mean, you know, we have to have some other facts here.
And I left something out of my potential amendment, that is, recommend default if, if items that are, that may be performed at this time are not completed by X date, and the bond will cover all remaining work. Makes sense?
When would we determine those items?
Well, the, the town council could make that determination.
We're making the motion right now to say you have to have a certain amount of these punch list items done in the next three weeks. What, what items are we picking?
Again, the punch list has, has a heading, the very first heading, "Items That May Be Performed At This Time."
Right.
All of those items.
Okay, well, but here's one thing, right? Because one of the things it says is to replace the asphalt binder course.
And you just heard from Mr. Acre, is that he has an arrogant improvement?
Right, but we also heard from Rick that, that that shouldn't get done until the work on the three remaining properties is done, correct?
Asphalt surface course here.
I, I mean, I'm with you on, I'm with you on this, Todd. I'm just trying to make sure we don't, because Rick's opinion is, don't repair the binder until, and that's on the list of.
Is that right, Rick?
Don't repair the binder?
What's in the 88 email, body eight-four punch list?
I, I think, I think I said that could be done, but I'd have to look on that.
It's number one, I would say maybe.
It says.
It's number one, and it's also for the downed list.
Replace asphalt binder course areas as reviewed with site contractor.
And then the fourth item down is place sidewalk.
This is your correspondence there.
Right. So, but I thought you had said that you didn't think that, that repairing the binder should be done until all of the heavy equipment for the other three lots was out of the.
No, no, Trish, I, I think what I said was in line with the email and the punch list. The binder can be done because it's still going to be covered by asphalt surface course.
Okay. But, but not the, okay.
Not the surface course, but realistically, the, the people that do this kind of work typically would want to do that together. They don't want to come and then two weeks, or four weeks, or 10 weeks later, come back and do the surface course. But there's nothing structurally wrong with it. Thank you.
But, okay, but now, but now you, I, I'm just trying to not get people tripped up here, but now you're saying that a contractor is typically not going to want to come in and repair the binder and then come back 10 weeks later and put the surface course off.
If he can't get a full day's work, and he doesn't want to come in unless he's finishing up a job somewhere else, but there's nothing wrong, if they get all the other work done, which seems to be one of the sentiments, the fact they haven't done the binder yet, that, that's a judgment call for the planning board. DPW is neutral on that.
Okay. And it would be a call for the town council, frankly, at that point.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Because you're just recommending that it be called, the bond be called.
So the one thing missing in, in the amendment is a date certain.
Right.
So this would be a.
October 3rd, when they come back here.
And then back to October 3rd.
So they're fire hydrants? Are they done? You guys have fire hydrants? So.
Okay, where are you at? So, so the.
Right, they submit signed document, fire department, water department, state and satisfaction testing of all hydrants. And the fact that they have all those houses down there, the fire hydrant system hasn't been tested or even completed is, it does not make any sense.
So, so Tricia, you're amending.
So I will amend.
You're amending your amendment to put in the date certain as, as October 3rd.
Well, actually, I think I'd make it October 1st, because, no, October 2nd, because our meeting's on the 3rd.
Right.
So that, or, or even better, the Friday before, so that Ed has time and to get us a, you know, a list. So whatever, what is the Friday before?
But are, are you making them come back here still, or are you just making a motion to the town council that they, that the town council pull the bond if XYZ items are not done by X date? And the bond is sufficient?
I think that's the, I think that's.
Or do you want them to come back here?
I think that's where we go.
Right?
I, I don't think that, if we're going to give them a date certain, then I think, if we're going to give them a date certain, then, then I think, and it's the day before they're, or right before they're supposed to come back here, then yes, I think there's time for us to ha, to see this one more time and, and have a vote on this, actually have a vote on it. If, if we weren't going to give them a date certain, then it wouldn't really matter, but they can't, they're not going to go to the council before that date certain, right? They're going to, unless they have every bit of it, every bit of it done, which, in which case, that's a win-win for everybody, right? So, yeah, I think, I think that if we give them a date certain the Friday before our next meeting, then, you know, if it's all done, great. If it's not, then it goes off to the council.
I just have one question. How do we, is it, is the turnaround too fast to get on the agenda for the town council for the 10th?
If they're here on the 3rd?
If they're here on the 3rd, given them all that information, I guess Bill would be the person to ask. Is that too much information?
I haven't been on the council in 10 years, so I'm a little rusty there, but, uh.
It would be before their agenda, it'd be the.
The packet will have gone out a week, a week out, right?
They could, they'd still have time to get it on the agenda.
The 10th?
Yeah.
And we push it to the maximum, because it's not a lot of time. It's a week. Not a lot to look at the information we got for.
Can I just speak?
Sorry.
Deb Janik, town council. So I think that that's not a heavy lift for the 10th. You know, we get the packet prior and we can go through it, but we really need a lot of, of the factual information if we're going to need to make a decision, and we'll have our solicitor there and probably Rick Rogers too. But we need to have really good detailed information, as Tricia kind of outlined.
Right. Right.
So you know, you know the packets, Bill.
Yeah.
Few hundred pages or few.
I just, I just want to avoid a situation where we miss this window and this gets pushed out even more, and who knows, we got a frost that hits or something like that, right? Like, we're going to be into, into winter, and that's going to be prohibitive of even getting some of this.
Yeah, they won't, they won't, they won't do the asphalt work after November 15 or something like that.
Well, even beyond the asphalt work, if you can't dig into the ground, you know what I mean, like.
I think, I think it's, it's timely. We need, we need to get it done. Unfortunately, we've had a history of developers who've, who've kind of led us down this road before, they're not the first one. So we, we need to put an end to it, because the town's the one that gets stuck, and the residents who live in that, in that development.
So the, the date certain then would be Friday, September 28?
29th.
Twenty, I'm sorry, September 29. Friday, September 29. So.
Can we repeat back what the amended motion is?
Yes.
Need a whiteboard and write all of this out.
Yeah, that, that the amended motion would be that, prior to our meeting on October 3rd, that the planning board has provided the following information, the remaining amount on the bond, the punch list that I said today, which we have, the punch list as completed by September 29th. Estimates, if possible, as to how much of the work could, could and would be covered by the bond. And, and then a recommendation to the town council that if the items listed here as, could be, you know, performed now, are not completed by the 29th, that, that the council actually, go ahead and, and pull the bond.
Provided.
Provided that the, is enough remaining money in the bond to cover the outstanding items.
Okay, if there isn't.
And if there, well, if there isn't, then the council's going to, I mean, the council's.
It's up to them.
It's up to them. They're going to have to, they're going to have to figure it out.
Okay, good. So we, we, we have, everybody understands the amended motion?
I'll second that amended motion.
Any further, well, you don't have to, because Tricia can amend her own amendment with, I don't think a second is necessary under Robert's rules of order for that, because it's all part of a, a motion that has already been seconded by Tricia. And so all we need now is any further discussion, then we can vote. Any further discussion?
The only other recommendation that I would make is that we could, just to make sure that this doesn't take too long, we could also vote tonight to let the council know that we are doing, that we're taking this vote tonight, we've set this deadline, and that we will have a report for them as to the status of this first thing, October 4th in the morning, and that, you know, we would hope that they would place it on their next agenda. So we could give them a heads up.
So we could add that, we could add that to our motion and then ask Ashley and Ed to follow up on that, because they'll, they'll need to take that to town council tomorrow morning, or tomorrow sometime.
I totally agree. I think giving them a heads up is, is worthwhile in, in this regard. My only other comment here is, as quickly as we, I think it's prudent that we quickly determine the exact dollar amount that's remaining in the bond so that we can get that to Mr. Rogers, so that he can begin his estimation process with enough lead time, so that come our October 3 meeting, we have that data point as well.
I think Rogers, I think DPW Director Rogers can work on his estimates without that.
Yeah, even better, and then we can put them together.
Okay, so we, we, we have, we tweaked our motion again, but hearing no further comment on that, all those in favor? Okay, so I think you, on.
I think it's a big smokescreen on that paper.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so it's, it's eight in favor, one opposed. Okay?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, chairman, members of the board.
Yes, Nathan?
Do you need me anymore?
Um, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. You're free. Ed, could you get the lights? Okay, that, that brings us to agenda item number 5B, which is Wingover Farm. I don't believe we need to do anything about this. I think that issue has pretty much been resolved. Sue Anderson is here, representing the Historic Cemeteries Commission. I, I think at this point, the Historic Cemeteries Commission feels that they have an agreement with, with Amoresco, and that, you know, it might fall apart, but at least at, at this time, there's nothing more to do. We're just going to give it a little more time to make sure it works. Is that?
I believe it's.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you, Sue, so we don't have to do any more on that particular item. That brings us to C, which is East Coast Construction, and this is another Rick Rogers issue. This is something that we just keep on the agenda, because we're waiting for, we're, we're waiting for work to be done on Fish Road to Rick's satisfaction before we release that remaining amount on their surety. So Rick.
This regards to East Coast?
It is, yes.
Yes. They, they have installed a curb, but.
They have installed a curb, but I have not seen it when it's raining. So, I do not know if it functions. So, I would recommend that it, again, gets continued or whatever the phraseology is. It's all on the C of the at work.
Okay, so we will not do that tonight. We will just keep this on the agenda. And we will see what has happened when we gather together on October 3.
And two, if it doesn't rain in a sufficient amount in a timely manner, I will contact East Coast and they will do the same thing they did before, which was bring a water truck.
Yeah.
Water down so we can see how it...
Can see how it... If it actually drains. Good.
That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
But don't sit down, Rick, because the next agenda item also concerns you. And this is item 5D. Tiberian Horizon Development Corporation, request return of escrow funds by concerning the Lake Road Acres project. Now, we don't have any backup information on that at all.
Up to that, how much is left in there? Because I think they still have to continue.
I was there today, Rick, and it looks to me like they just have the binder down. It's not the paved portion... It looked to me like the paved portion of what they are now calling Hinter's Way does not have a top coat on it yet. But I may be wrong.
I wouldn't say you're wrong. What I would say is, I have not reviewed it.
Okay.
Not due once, so I do not notice that. So, I would not be able to respond whether the S motion is...
Okay. Motion to continue that one. We'll just keep that on the agenda.
Thank you.
That brings us to 5E, approval of minutes. Ed, I don't know if you ever sent me minutes, but I...
I did not send them to you. I apologize. I... They're done. I did not send them to you. I forgot all about it. So, they're done, like I said.
Okay. Can you get those out to the planning board as soon as possible? Don't wait until the packet for the next meeting.
No, I'll send them back.
Yeah, because then, on a rainy day, we'll be able to deal with that. Our meeting in October could get pretty busy. Yes?
Are those at least posted on...
I did not. Forgot all about it.
Okay. Post those before you email them out as draft, please.
Is that with me still?
I guess so, Rick. I can't see anything... Yeah, no, I think we're set with you, Rick. Thanks so much for your input.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, that brings us to 5F. Rescheduling the November 7 meeting. And because there's a special election going on. So, November 14 is our default date. And I believe that the council chambers are available on November 14. So... But I think I need a motion. So, would somebody make a motion to reschedule the November 7 regular monthly meeting to November 14?
It's not moved.
Oh, Janice has made that motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor? Unanimous. Chris, you didn't vote, but we come to you to vote. Okay. So, that's November 4. So, we'll be meeting November 14. That brings us to 5G. Discussion on what legal and/or regulatory changes might be needed interpreted in zoning and other statutes, regulations to prepare the town for the significant land use changes that will occur statewide. Coming up, many will be coming up on January 1. One or two are a little later. Okay. We do have a background memo from Ashley. We know that work... That we... That the town needs to do some preparation before January 1. Ashley, would you like to focus us, maybe just using your own memo, on the two or three top priority things that need to get done? And how do we get those done? We do have some money. We do have some money in the planning board budget.
So, in the memo I gave you, I broke these down into two different tiers. And the purpose of doing that is that there's a lot of stuff that needs to get amended by January. There are some things that are basically direct inserts from state law that you have no control over. And not taking the time right now to make your ordinance and regulations consistent with those requirements and allowing state law to override you has no consequence. So, the fact that, you know, the zoning board is not going to be the Board of Appeals anymore and your decisions are going to go directly to Superior Court, the fact that you leave that in your regulations doesn't matter right now. It's not going to go through that process, whether it's written there or not. So, my suggestion is to not take the time right now to focus on drafting those changes and considering those changes. You have to... You're going to have to go through the effort twice by, you know, doing two public hearings. But because of the severely limited timeframe that you have to get these things done for January, you know, that's one of the ways that you can kind of split this into two pieces and leave those things for after.
Right.
You obviously want to be consistent with state law. So, I highly recommend that you come back after January, address those items to make them consistent.
And that's housekeeping. That's cleaning up.
It's essentially housekeeping. So, the four items that I would recommend that you take care of before January is, one is your inclusionary zoning, which you don't call inclusionary zoning, but essentially is inclusionary zoning. That has changed pretty dramatically to require a minimum of 25% of the units in an inclusionary zoning project as LMI units. You cannot set the threshold for triggering that at anything greater than 10. So, you can't say... You can't keep inclusionary zoning and say, "We'll keep inclusionary zoning, but it doesn't trigger until 15 units." You have to set it at either 10 or something lower than 10 units. The big question around inclusionary zoning is that now it is a mandatory density bonus of two units for every one LMI unit. And I have done this math. I did this math when they wrote the bill. I told them the math is not good math. And that a lot of municipalities will get rid of inclusionary zoning under these provisions. They didn't listen. And now, I'm hearing people talking about getting rid of inclusionary zoning. So, that is a policy discussion for the town to talk about and make. One thing that has come up in conversation is there's nothing in the provision for inclusionary zoning that indicates that you can't pick and choose what zoning districts you implement inclusionary zoning for. So, if a community was to say, "Inclusionary zoning makes sense in our village district where we have water and sewer and we can handle that kind of density and we want to promote that kind of density, we're going to trigger inclusionary zoning in that zoning district. But we're not going to trigger inclusionary zoning in our R80 district in our watershed overlay." Those are, again, that's a policy discussion for the town to have. So, you have to do something with inclusionary zoning because your current inclusionary zoning doesn't cut it anymore. It doesn't comply. Under the zoning bill, I think you want to take care... I highly recommend that you take care of special use permits because the provision now reads that if you do not have specific and objective criteria for every category of special use permit, they are considered permitted uses. So, you have to go into your zoning ordinance, look at all of your special use permits. You have to decide how you want to categorize them. So, do you categorize them by the way that they're listed in your use table? Residential, commercial, manufacturing, industrial, however they're organized? Create categories for each of those... Or, excuse me, create the specific and objective criteria for each of those categories or categorize them some other way. Once you've looked at all of them and decide, like, it makes sense to create these kind of buckets of special use permits, these are the specific and objective criteria that go along with each of them. If you don't do that, those special use permits are not special use permits. They are permitted by right. So, they will not go through a special use permit process. They are considered a P or a yes in the use table.
Can I ask you a question, Ashley?
Please.
On the existing special use permits, if they don't fit the categories that we create, right? Because a lot of what we did with special use permits is to determine whether or not they were a fit within the neighborhood, right? That was kind of like the main criteria. Would they be a nuisance in the neighborhood, right? If they don't fit the criteria, do they all become just pre-existing non-conforming? Because we have a lot of them.
No, I think they're still special uses.
Right, but they... But they won't fit the news...
Criteria to get a special use... It's criteria to get a special use permit.
Right.
It's not designated... Designation as a special use.
You're talking about things that were previously permitted through the special use permit process?
Yeah. That don't... That won't... So, let's just take... Let's just, I don't know, pick one, right? There's some special use that was permitted in a residential zone previously. And basically, the determination was, did it kind of fit in the neighborhood, right? But there wasn't an objective criteria. Now, that special use has an objective criteria that says, okay, this can only exist in a residential zone if it's more than 1,000 feet from...
It's not going backwards.
No, I know it's not going backwards. But the ones that existed, are they... Do they now have pre-existing non-conforming status? Because they can't...
Because they can't meet the current specific and objective criteria. But they were permit... I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. But they were permitted at a time when that didn't exist.
Right. Which means they won't lose their status.
No, I understand what you're saying, Trish. But I still think that unless you change the zoning, they're still permitted by special use permit.
But isn't the criteria part of the zoning?
The criteria to get the special use permit is changing, not the zoning designation.
Okay.
That would be like in your subdivision regulations. If you went in and added some required findings that a previous subdivision, like, can't meet any... But doesn't nullify the fact that they got an approval.
Okay. So, you're sort of answering my question. In other words, in the zoning code, then, if it's a special use permit, does it say, "Special use permit"? Well, I'm just going to pick something. You know, restaurants less than 10,000 feet, square feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that used to be... Now, is it... That's now the criteria for that special use permit, right? So, if that's actually written into the zoning code...
Wait, you're getting... It's changing the zoning tables, though, Trish. You're changing...
This is not changing the tables.
So, there's just this set of questions that are going to exist outside of the zoning table?
It's not in the zoning table.
So, where does it go?
It's going to go in the ordinance, in the ordinance under special use permits. It will say, "The following categories of special use permit exist. These are the specific and objective criteria under which a special use permit is approved." And you will list. And it's... So, everybody loves to use drive-throughs because everybody makes drive-throughs go through a special use permit.
Right.
So, you might have... And maybe the drive-through use falls under some other category of commercial, retail, business use. It says, "Drive-through." The specific and objective criteria are, you know, your microphone has to be pointed away from residential buildings. Your queuing line has to be eight cars long. Your blah blah... And you list those things. So, you basically have to think of every scenario you can in which you might permit a drive-through. Put those specific and objective criteria in the list, and that goes into your zoning ordinance.
Can we just make all the yeses no's? So, we figure all that out?
Yeah.
If you want to.
Yeah.
There's nothing that says you can't do that. But you are essentially prohibiting...
A lot of things.
A lot of uses. I will tell you, this has been one of the more challenging ones to address because you can't think of every scenario under which you would permit a drive-through. And the drive-through might be in the middle of a commercial district on a huge lot and there are no problems. Or they're proposing it, abutting a residential lot, and it's on a very small lot. And it's a lim... You know, there's limited space. And there are things that you may want to impose on that that you wouldn't impose on the other one. The issue here is, if it's not in your list, you can't do it. And I think communities really need to take a hard look. And I haven't done this with yours, but I think you really need to take a hard look at how you've been using special use permits. Because the reality of a special use permit is, it is a conditionally permitted use. A lot of communities have overused the special use permit tool to, well, you know, they could be okay, but maybe it wouldn't be okay. And we'll just give it a special use permit. And then, when they come before us for the application, we'll figure it out.
That's kind of what we've done.
Yeah, that's exactly what we've done.
So, the General Assembly is reeling that back in and saying, "No more of that." I've got a community who, in conversation about this, said to me, "Well, when I have a single-family home being built on a non-conforming lot, they have to get a special use permit." I'm like, "Well, that's an abuse of the special use permit process. That's not what it was designed for." And what specific and objective criteria are you going to assign to those types of situations? That would be almost impossible to get your arms around and to write something. There are some communities that have criteria for special use permits. They are not specific or objective. They say things like, "Should not alter the general character of the neighborhood." That's not going to cut it here. So, you really need to... This is another policy discussion that has to happen with the town about how you're using special use permits. How do you want to continue to use them? How do you want to categorize them? Then, we got to come up with the specific and objective criteria for the ones that you keep.
Ashley, going back to what you opened with, that is also due for January?
Oh, yeah. And I'm only on number two.
How... I mean, that in itself is a workshop that could be three months long.
You could discuss it for three months after.
Yeah.
It took us three months to draft it for you.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I know.
So, is there an amendment process? Or, I mean, because obviously, all of this can't be thoughtfully done. Or what are... Sorry, I'm putting the cart before the horse here.
I know that the League of Cities and Towns has officially requested, through a written letter request to the Speaker and the Senate President to please extend the deadline for implementation. That's lovely. But the reality is that January 1, these come into effect. And if you don't have it written into your local regulations, state law takes over for you. In some cases, that's fine. In some cases, that's not fine. In some cases, that's not fine. Even if they extend the deadline, they're not going to get that done. I would be surprised if they get into session, get something like that going, and actually get something like that to the floor in the month of January. So you're looking, and then the question becomes, what happens to all the municipalities that figured out a way to comply? Now the deadline is extended. It's, it's, it's a less than desirable situation that everyone is finding themselves in, for sure. I don't, I don't have, I'm not holding my breath here that they're going to extend the deadline. Even if the Speaker could be persuaded, the Senate's not beholden to do anything about that.
So if we were to attempt to make good on this for the 1-124 deadline, what's the recommended process? I mean, is it literally us getting into a room and trying to workshop?
Well, we're supposed to get assistance, aren't we? I mean, didn't, didn't they say that each community would get, would get a certified planner to help?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to do the best I can to explain all of this to you, understanding that I, I, I wear like six hats in this situation, and so I'm going to, I'm going to skirt down the middle of all of them. Rhode Island Housing has municipal technical assistance funding. They opened that program several months ago. I don't know, I don't remember the exact date. A couple of, a handful of municipalities, I don't know the exact number, maybe it was a lot, and that's why they responded the way they did, applied for the MTAP funding to address the General Assembly housing package of bills that we're talking about. Initially, four communities got a green light and were told, yes, you're pre-approved, go pick your consultant, go draft your scope of work. Within days of that approval, Rhode Island Housing said, mm, nope, we, just kidding, you're not pre-approved. We are going to issue an RFP to our pre-approved consultants to draft templates. We'll release the templates to all the municipalities, and then municipalities are welcome to apply for MTAP funding to take the template documents and use them. You can pick your consultant, your consultant can take the, the templates, they can work with you to tailor them, and then you can get your language drafted. In theory, that's a great idea. In practical application, the timing is so tight that it's, 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 anyway, the templates are being drafted. Full disclosure, my firm is drafting them. They are due to Rhode Island Housing on the 19th. I don't know what Rhode Island Housing's release date of those templates are. I have encouraged Rhode Island Housing repeatedly to open the application process for this funding, get people contracted so that when the templates are available, they can literally start the next day. I have heard from municipalities that have said, you know, we, I, we can't wait for templates, like, I spoke, we had a call earlier today, Providence was like, "I have to have my language drafted next week." I don't, there won't be any templates next week, as far as I know. I can't wait. So Providence has gone and done what they have to do, and they're, they're drafting their, their pieces of it.
So what would happen after we draft the language? Let's, let's assume we solve for actually drafting the language, what's the sort of regulatory steps there?
Well, there's two, there's two pieces of this. There's the zoning language, and there's the subdivision language. It all has to go through a public hearing process, it has to get advertised, some, I don't think you have this here, I don't know if you do like a first and second reading?
No.
Okay, so that's great, that saves you a lot of time. Some communities do first reading, second reading, then the public hearing. Some communities have an ordinance committee, and that's like, that's part of their process, it's got to go to ordinance committee. So those communities are adding, automatically adding 30 days to their, potentially 30 days to their process. If you do the math, everybody's a little bit different depending on all of those variables, but the general consensus is that by mid-October, you have to have language, you have to start scheduling your public hearings, you have to, like, people have to be ready. I mean, this is the kind of situation where if you have an advertising issue, like, you could default after January if you miss a meeting. This is the kind of situation where, you know, communities need to start talking about holding special meetings to get these things done. But you're talking about mid, like, four to five weeks from now? You need language. And I'm only through two, two of the bills.
Do the other two quickly.
Okay, so...
Those are the four big ones with the most impact.
I'll stick with, I'll stick with zoning, adaptive reuse. This is going to be community-dependent, whether or not you have some of these buildings or if there's a concern, but this essentially makes the adaptive reuse of schools, hospitals, malls, commercial buildings, automatically a permitted use for residential development. You want something in your zoning ordinance that, it's one thing to, to allow the permitted use to just happen, it's another thing that if you don't have something in your zoning ordinance that says that an adaptive reuse project shall be subject to the standards found in block, whatever landscaping, lining, signage, buffers, all of those things. Without that, there are no standards, it's just a permitted use, because there's nothing in your local ordinance that says, in an adaptive reuse project, these are the standards that apply. So you either need to use existing standards, or you need to develop the standards in, in the ordinance. The two requirements for the adaptive reuse to be a permitted use is, one, there cannot be any environmental land use restrictions on the property, it's a no-brainer. The other is, is that it has to be at least 50% of the floor area has to be residential units. And then satisfying those two criteria makes an adaptive reuse project an automatically permitted use regardless of the zoning district. So you could have industrial buildings in an industrial zone that would become permitted use as residential. And then the last one is the subdivision enabling. This one changes the authority of the administrative officer, it changes the authority of the planning board in terms of what applications you have permitting authority over. So the highlights of, of this one are that minor subdivisions are now nine lots or less, so we went from five or less to nine or less. Anything over nine is a major. Your public hearing in a major project moves from preliminary stage to master plan stage. Your public informational meeting doesn't exist anymore. At the preliminary stage, you're not required to hold a public hearing, but you are required to notify abutters. The, a minor subdivision, so again, we're talking about nine lots or less, a minor subdivision that does not involve street creation, does not require Unified Development Review, which is another requirement you have to add, is reviewed by the administrative officer and is approved by the administrative officer, that never comes to the planning board again. So you're not going to see frontage subdivisions that meet all the requirements, minors, anyway. If it has, if it creates a street or extends a street, it comes to the planning board for a public hearing. If they need a, what's considered to be a variance or a special use permit, it comes to the planning board. But the planning board now, under Unified Development Review, issues that variance or that special use permit, it does not go to the zoning board. So they don't bounce back and forth, they get the relief from the planning board. So the zoning board is not going to have a whole lot to do after this is over, because they're no longer the Board of Appeals, and they no longer will issue variances in special use permits when they are part of a land development project or subdivision. Minor land development now has an actual definition in the enabling legislation. I will not get all of these right, but it is essentially 7,500 square feet of commercial floor area or less, nine units in a multifamily or condo development, 2,500 square feet of commercial floor area or less in combination with six units of residential. There's a couple of others that I'm not, I don't have memorized. Those are considered minor land developments, they go through the same process as a minor subdivision, but the administrative officer is the review and permitting authority, those do not come to the planning board. Anything over those triggers is a major land development, goes through the same process as a major subdivision, does come before the planning board. Development plan review is now different. There are two tiers of development plan review. There's administrative development plan review, that's done by the administrative officer. There's formal development plan review, that is done by the planning board. You are allowed to determine what goes into each of those categories, but you have to state that in your zoning ordinance. So you have to say, "these qualify for administrative review, these qualify for formal review." They have to get, you have to define that. I'm sure there are other nuances that I'm not mentioning, but that's like the major, those are the four major issues that need to get taken care of.
So, so what do we do, when do we do it, and who does it?
Yeah.
So you can't apply for the MTAP funding, so, and I know that Chris, Chris applied originally, like, early on, but they had, they had shut the door on that by the time they responded to his application. So Tiverton was not one of the four. He applied again last week and was reminded that the program is not open, and he said, "I know that, but I want you to keep my application and immediately process it when it is open." I don't, I don't know how they're going to handle that. I mean, I think it's, it's up to the town to decide, you know, how you want it, you just want to start, you want to tell Todd and I to start writing? We'll start writing. I, I just need direction to be told what, what to do. If you want to wait for the, the templates, you could do that, then we can tailor your stuff, and you can apply for funding, and hopefully it gets processed fast enough that you can have, still have time. You could start writing now and apply for funding as soon as it's available, and fill the gap with the rest of the funding to finish the project. But the town council needs to seriously start to think about public hearing dates, and like, you got to work backwards from your public hearing dates, basically.
Because eventually we'll be asking town council to change zoning.
Yes. Yes.
I think that the idea of waiting for the state is insane.
Yeah, the templates will not, will not be on time, they, they, that'll drift.
And Ashley's list, all the tier-one things are important, but there are a few that are really crisis-level important. And so I think that we might, the planning board might just have to schedule one or two workshops, go through them, come up with a recommendation, and get those recommendations to the council ASAP.
Special use permits are, are one thing. And then Ashley, as, as I read through this, I, I believe at, at the present time, in our use table, if a use is not mentioned, it is prohibited. But under the new situation, all uses are permitted unless they're specifically not permitted.
I, I don't read it that way. You could, we can have this discussion, you can show me what you're referencing.
I was just, I was just going to throw that out as another possible priority.
I thought that had to do with the, the new one that says, if the use isn't listed...
Yes, you have...
The zoning official now is to decide...
Well, you have to have a process, so either the zoning official or the zoning Board of Review. If I, if I came to the town and said, "I want to do this," and they're like, "Well, that's not in the use table, so it's not permitted." You, you can't just do that anymore, now you have to have a process that either goes to the zoning official or the zoning board where they have to do, they have to look at the uses that are in the use table, and can this be reasonably categorized within one of the existing uses? It's no more of just like, oh, sorry, it's not permitted, and that's the end of it. But you have to designate, is that the zoning board, is that the zoning official? I mean, my recommendation is not to put that kind of a burden, it's not in your use table for one of two reasons. One is you just didn't want it, or it's a relatively, and, you know, this is dependent on the age of your, your table, but it may be a relatively new use that we don't know a lot about, that, you know, is not in there because it wasn't contemplated at the time that those were written. That could be, you know, a reasonable burden to put on one individual to make that determination. So that may be something you want to, again, it's a policy decision, but you want to talk about the, the, you know, putting that burden on one administrative staff. And the other piece of this that I'll mention is that your technical review committee now has some authority to make decisions, it's limited.
And hold hearings.
Um, but you can assign certain decision-making authority to the technical review committee. Like, for instance, on final plans, you can send that to either the administrative officer or the technical review committee. So, you know, communities that don't have technical review committees are definitely going to want to get them. Tiverton has one. The makeup of your technical review committee is, they've broadened, who can sit on it, you can now appoint members of the public to your technical review committee if you wanted to. And the administrative officer can rely on the technical review committee in those situations where the administrative officer is now tasked with issuing decisions on things that previously would have come to the planning board and been discussed in a public forum. You know, I'm certainly recommending that the technical review committee fill as much of that gap as you can. There's, there's nothing that says that the minor applications that are going to the administrative officer only, don't, that you don't have to, that you can't require that somehow unabutter gets notified, or that you do post the fact that this application is under review, you know, on the website, in the paper, whatever, you're, you know, whatever... is under review, you know, on the website, in the paper, whatever your, you know, whatever the thought process is to try to minimize the stark difference between the public process that was happening and now the not-public process of just one person making this decision in, in an office. You know, there's a, there's a wide gap there, and, you know, what do you want to do to fill that within the parameters of the law? So there's going to be some, I would have, my, you know, my guess is there's going to be some strangely creative things that come out of this across the 39 cities and towns when they all sit down at the table and discuss how they're going to do this.
Well, I, I'd like to get this process moving as soon as possible. And I don't know if we, i- i- if we can, if we, the planning board can, can sort of assign staff to start working on the, on the, on the biggest issues that may have fairly quick fixes. Like, I'm thinking of special use permits. We could go through the special, the huge long list of special use permits that we have and get rid of a lot of them. Just get rid of them. I mean, I, I know that that's extreme, but we can do that under state law. And then we don't have to sit down and try to do specific in objective criteria for each one, and try to think of all of the different scenarios to, you know, that's just an example, Ashley. But are there things, I mean, there must be, the, the Rhode Island chapter of the American Plant, Planning Association must be talking among themselves and coming up with sort of quick fixes or relatively quick fixes that, that, you know, I know that this is something that we probably don't want to, you know, speak of too, you know, glibly, but, you know, are there things that, that staff could be doing now to present to the planning board in a timely fashion? And maybe we do have a special workshop, maybe, you know, maybe we, we do a couple of Saturday morning workshops so that, so that we can then turn around, have a public hearing, approve something at the planning board level, then pass it on to town council early enough so that town council can also have a public hearing and approve it. By December 31. So just focusing on, on those issues that the town really needs to address.
So I will say that, you know, from my perspective, the most important thing, I think, for you to determine upfront, because the drafting is not, I mean, it's a problem, but that's not, that's not the, I can draft. I can't draft if I don't have answers to the questions about the policy issues. Like, do you want to keep inclusionary zoning? Or are we just going to strike the whole thing? Because there's, those are two very different avenues to take here. If you want to keep inclusionary zoning, then there's a whole conversation around how do we design that, given the fact that this, this is what you have to work with. Like, this has to get incorporated into this. There might not be a whole lot of wiggle room here, although I will say that one of the things that I thought of when having this conversation with three other communities was, well, you know, we don't have to apply it to every zoning district. So those are the kind of things that come out of conversations like, like this. But answers to these questions are the first step, because I can start drafting, Todd can start drafting, but I'm going to have blanks to get filled in, in, in some places where we need direction from the town. There are some places where you do have, you do have decision-making ability here, and, you know, do you want your zoning official to permit modifications at 15%? Or do you want to let him go up to 25? Do you want to permit, you know, modifications of 5% or less with no public notice? Those are all policy considerations that, when I have answers to, we can start drafting.
Well, well, doesn't the comprehensive purity plan pretty much answer a lot of those questions? Too, too vague?
I think, Stu, we have to.
These are specific.
I, I think we, I think we have to have, fairness to Ashley and Todd, I think we have to have some sort of workshop or meeting and say, "Yep, okay, that sounds like a good idea on this one."
Yep.
No, we'd never go for that, because.
Yep, okay.
She needs direction.
Like, they need direction, and they need to know that once they draft this, there's a 99.9% chance that whenever they draft, we're going to throw holy water on them.
You don't have time to do it any other way.
And some of these things, by the way, and I'm sure Ashley's thought of this, there may be some things where the short-term answer is pull it out of the zoning code and say no. That doesn't mean we might not add it back in later on.
Exactly.
But if we don't, like, let's just take.
As an emergency measure.
As an emergency measure, we could say, we gotta, let's just get rid of it for now. And that'll buy us time next year, maybe when there is money in Rhode Island housing and yada, 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 you know, to put it back. So some things might be stopgap, and we won't, and I think, and Ashley might disagree with me, but I don't think we're going to be the only town that's doing stopgap measures. And just maybe some of these stopgap measures, you know, it will occur to, you know, the, to the general assembly that so foolishly passed all this nonsense without any real understanding of what it's going to mean, that maybe this backs them off a little bit, and they go, "Oh, well, law of unintended consequences. We've made it worse."
Right. Now, should that be done? Should, should the input from the planning board to Ashley and Todd, should that be done with the whole planning board as an agenda item, say, on our, on our October meeting? Or would it make more sense?
You can't wait till October to make those decisions.
We, so we need to put a, maybe a, a task group together, a working group, a committee of the planning board to, to begin that, that conversation right away. So how do we do that without violating the Open Meeting Act? And how do we do that without a lot of, you know, without notification to the Secretary of State of our agenda and formal minutes and all of that? Can we, can we have a task group? Just do a workshop. Just, just do the workshop.
Saturday morning.
So a Saturday morning workshop, and all members of the planning board are invited.
Yeah.
And, okay, so let's look at.
Need to be at that? Like, if we're discussing policy questions?
I mean.
It's public, it's, anybody can attend.
Well, yes.
Are you asking if we should invite somebody?
Yeah.
Ultimately, the town.
In order to get the most bang for the buck.
Well, ultimately, the town council is the policy-setting body for the town. So if at least two of them could participate to take, to carry the water back to the town council to say, like, "No, I sat through this. We listened. We talked through these things." Because the last thing you want to happen is to do all of this, have it get to the town council, and then, you know, not get it passed at a public hearing because of, you know, not enough information or misunderstanding, or, you know, angry, angry public yelling at them. You know, we've all seen all of that happen. I will say that we're working with three of the communities, three of the four communities that got in under the wire. They're sadly not that far ahead of you. But we've built in, like, we had an initial workshop with representatives of their planning board, there's, you know, some of their staff. The next workshop is going to be town council, their solicitors, their zoning board, their zoning official, their planning board, you know, they're packing the room full of all the people that need to understand this in an attempt to, while drafting, educate the people that are going to either use this or get in the way of getting it adopted as part of the process. Because we're trying to remove the roadblocks to, you know, avoid that situation where you get to the town council and people start like, "I didn't know anything about this. Nobody told me what was going on. I'm not okay with this."
Can we propose some dates?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, that, that we do that before we break up. And I'm going to suspend the rest of the agenda because it's stuff that we don't have to deal with tonight. It's, we're getting a little late here in the evening. But we, we could, we could come up with some dates right now, or we could ask Ed to poll the, poll the board with some dates.
You're here now.
We're, we're, we're here now. So how about, how about Saturday morning, this coming Saturday?
I could do it.
Next Saturday.
I can't do next Saturday, but that doesn't.
16th or 23rd. Ashley, are you available?
Yeah, Ashley, Ashley is key.
My whole life is going to be meetings until December.
Um, Ashley, we don't have to do it on a Saturday, but I think you, you would have to probably do a little more prep in advance of such a workshop, because you would be the one who would need to say, "Okay, gang, you know, here are some options. You know, which of these options seems best to the town in Tiverton?" You know, you, um, because we're not going to find a day when everybody's available. But Ashley is key.
When's Ashley available? 23rd, if you wanted to do a Saturday.
Okay, 23rd's fine with me. I'll make sure I'm available.
Does it have to be advertised?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a planning board workshop.
It's 11 days from now.
9:30 to, what time are we seeing this?
Noon. Not spending all day with you there.
To noon. No, no, I, I'm, I'm just.
Tell us how you really feel about us, Todd.
Especially you.
I'll remember that. Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to start, I don't want to start, like, ridiculously early, but I, I'd, I don't want to stick this in the middle of the day.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So I'd like to start in the morning, and I think, I'm hoping a couple of hours we can get through a good portion of it.
Yeah. If we, if we do some organizing, and I, I would certainly make myself available to you in advance if you, you know, if you needed to, and I'm, um, but if we have this pretty well organized, I think we can make a lot of progress.
Well, my intent would be to take that document that I gave you, go through it again against the, the legislation.
Yep. That's a good place to start.
And lay out all the places where you have the ability to, to make a determination, and we'll just go one by one.
Yep, yep, yep. Now, nine, is nine o'clock too early? Would people prefer 9:30? I'm an, I'm an early riser, so nine o'clock is.
Ashley, let's convene, Ashley, can you get in?
With coffee.
Yes.
Is, is, is nine, is nine good for you, Ashley?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. So it's, it's nine on, nine o'clock on Saturday, September 23rd.
Yeah, it'll work.
Okay. Excellent.
Is this available, the town hall available?
Oh, I'm sure it is.
I'll check.
Yeah.
And I, I would recommend, you know, extending the invitation to council members.
Yes, certainly, certainly our two liaison, and maybe everybody.
So Saturday, 23rd, 12, Town Hall.
Correct. Okay, well, I, there, there's nothing else on our agenda that needs to be dealt with tonight, so I'm going to suggest that we. Excellent, thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.